Good evening, everyone. My name is Maryne Lopien and I will be chairing the public hearings today. I'm joined by my colleagues Councilmember Stanley Martin and Councilmember Kate Smith. These hearings are part of a larger effort to collaboratively govern with community members and ensure that our legislative and budget decisions are entirely guided by community voices and evidence-based data. Under council rules, council members can call for special meetings, including public hearings, ensuring that the voices of residents are heard and included in important matters. Today, we will hear from experts around the issues of LGBTQ plus rights and housing. We will also hear from community members concerned about these issues. It's our hope that the community input will assist us in identifying unmet needs and inform solutions to keep our communities safe. We will hear from experts first with some questions to follow, and then we will open it up to the community to speak. Following hearings, we will share solution-based recommendations with Mayor Evans and our colleagues in council, and swiftly work towards advocacy and implementation. Now, we begin the public hearing. Each speaker will be given 10 minutes. Each community member will be given three minutes. We will start with Jason Barcott-Curts, who is the CEO and President of Trillium Health. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me to speak tonight. As you said, my name is Jason Barcott-Curts. I'm the President and CEO of Trillium Health, and also a proud member of the LGBTQ plus community as well. So Trillium Health is the leading LGBTQ plus healthcare provider in Rochester. We were established in 1989 as an HIV AIDS clinic, and we expanded in 2016 to provide primary care and supportive services to everyone in the community, regardless of their income, sexual orientation, gender identity, race, or ethnicity. Trillium Health isn't like any other healthcare provider. Every member of our team goes through special training. We ask our patients for their pronouns and their preferred names, and we work hard to provide a care with an environment that's free of judgment and stigma. In addition to healthcare, Trillium Health provides LGBTQ plus training to the community organizations that are looking to be more inclusive and affirming as well. Our Trillium Health Foundation also oversees the Rochester Pride Parade and Festival, which drew over 20,000 people last year, and we're getting ready for this year's events on July 19th. In 2025, Trillium Health was proud to be officially designated as a federally qualified health center. We are now one of 1,500 community health centers across the country, providing that high-quality healthcare and supportive services to everyone, regardless of their ability to pay. However, this year has been challenging for the LGBTQ plus community. There have been executive orders targeted towards our trench center people and their healthcare. There have also been executive orders targeted at diversity, equity, and inclusion. According to the Human Rights Campaign, transgender Americans encounter stigma and discriminatory policies in many aspects of their life, which can result in lower economic status, poverty, homelessness, social isolation, and poor health outcomes. All these factors can increase the risk of violence against our transgender people, and this risk is especially acute among our transgender people of color. In the last 12 months, Trillium Health has cared for more than 1,900 transgender patients across 5,200 businesses. On average, we're seeing a 22% growth year-over-year. Transgender people are moving to Rochester to access gender-affirming care, to escape discrimination. In 2025, we welcome 19 new patients, and from other states. When people move here, they need food, they need a job, they need a place to live, and other resources. Trillium Health employs help connect our patients to the resources they need. However, the demand for affordable housing is especially high. Many of our current housing grants are restricted to people living in HIV. However, we are always trying to find ways to make sure that everybody that comes to our doors, we help them. We use our fundraising dollars to support our Patient Care Fund. This can help with past due rent, utility disconnections, security deposits, and first month rents. Our 100 dollars can only go so far. We would appreciate the program funding from the city council to help meet urgent needs for housing among our transgender population. We're also thinking about housing for LGBTQ plus communities as the age. Assemblymember Harry Branson created a survey recently to study the need for LGBTQ plus housing among older adults in Rochester, and Trillium Health is helping to circulate the survey among its patients and clients. Employment is also another concern. The Trillium Health will provide transgender patients in need with a list of employees that are transgender-friendly. Additionally, we hire team members to reflect the communities we serve, and I'm really proud that our team aligns with our patient demographics. It's really important that. We recently pivoted an initiative in partnership with the HRC Foundation to provide next-level training at our Moka Center, a community outreach center that serves our BIPOC LGBTQ plus communities. This next-level program is a 10-week program focused on job readiness, financial health and wellness for members of the LGBTQ plus community. This free program includes tips on writing resumes, job application support, computer skills, digital literacy. It also helps participants to set goals and connect them with potential employment opportunities. We've had two of those graduates of this program join the Trillium team. We would encourage city council to explore funding for similar job training programs in Rochester. Finally, we are concerned about the potential, in particular transgender legislation at federal level. In January, President Trump signed an executive order that would prohibit gender-affirming care for people under the age of 19. Although the executive orders have been challenged in federal court, we remain concerned Congress will pass anti-transgender legislation, and President Trump could sign it if so. New York State has specific protections for the transgender community written into its constitution. It specifically prohibits discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. We are fortunate to live in a state that includes these protections. However, it's unclear how these changes in federal law could impact healthcare providers like ourselves and how we receive federal funding. We anticipate that any new legislation will be challenged in court. Trillium Health is committed to providing compassionate care to everyone, especially those from historically marginalized communities. Since our founding days, we treat everybody who walks through the paddles with the dignity and respect that they deserve. We appreciate the support of the city by Rochester City Council, and we look forward to working in partnership to protect our transgender brothers and support the local LGBTQ plus community. Thank you.
May I ask a few questions? How are you, sir?
I'm great, thank you so much.
Good, good, good. So I have two questions. The first is related to the Moka Center, and I'm very familiar with the history of Moka, and I am wondering if there is a person of color who manages the Moka Center?
Yes, we're Director of Moka Center, he's personally colored, and he reports into our VP of Community Engagement, who's of significant color.
Wonderful. And I am wondering, especially given the high number of LGBTQ plus community members with Trillium Health, I'm wondering if you have reached out to the county clerk's office to discuss the issue of gender-affirming and discrimination?
We haven't specifically reached out to the office, but again, we continue to talk about it. We advocate both at the state and at the federal level as well, because it's so important that we need to maintain funding to continue to serve our community and provide the services we do today.
Do you think it would be beneficial to reach out to the county clerk and reconservably help?
Yeah, of course. I think my personal view is we have to continue to educate and show the impact, and make people appreciate the number of people that we are serving within our transgender community here in Rochester, and how people are coming to Rochester to receive the gender-affirming care that they deserve.
Councilmember, thank you so much for leading our Trillium and the areas in which Trillium does provide life-affirming services for folks in our community. With our budget coming up, one of the things we're interested is how we can use our dollars to fill really essential gaps usually quite a few, especially around housing. Housing is a massive issue, and I understand for trans community, our queer community, and a lot of us here. So, like, could you, do you have a specific number? If we were able to collaborate with the county and work with the partners here in council, how, like, how much are we talking, and how many people would it serve specifically around assistance with security deposits, rent, and placing people in, say, housing?
I don't have specific numbers tonight, no, but what we said are kind of welcome some numbers. We're always looking for different areas we can look at, how we provide funding for HIV clients, especially because that's where a lot of state funds come from. But we got data that we could look at in terms of how our Patient Care Fund is being used today over the last few years, to see how much of that supported a lot of the Patient Care Fund does go through to housing, and certainly need to see in terms of officials coming through our doors that are either sleeping on couches of friends and family through to being on streets and homeless as well. They come through many doors within Trillium via our home coaching sites, Moka through our community as well.
Thank you. And final question, I'm aware that one of the LGBTQ plus friendly shelters recently closed down. Could you talk a bit about the importance of providing spaces that specifically cater to the needs of the LGBTQ plus community, primarily housing and shelters as they transition into more permanent housing?
Yeah, again, I'm not too knowledgeable on that specific situation, but I think it's just like the approach we take in healthcare, we want to make sure that everybody who walks through your doors is treated with that dignity and respect, and we know there is stigma already around your homelessness, where you're homeless, and making sure we do get treated in a way that should be as well. So I think it's, I think everybody should be treated with that same respect anywhere that they go. I suspect there are places that come with a part of the LGBTQ community as well that has a stigma that bothers others as well.
Thank you. It would be very helpful if you had, if you could follow up with the gap in funding you had with the health connect, the Moka Job Training Program?
Yeah, definitely, we've got some raise that's on that, it's a pilot program, and we're looking at ways of having to do it to expand that, and it was very successful. Just as a big place to reach jobs in Trillium, and still to mobile, and other organizations as well.
Wonderful. Is there federal funding that you are concerned that may go away?
Yes, so we are recently qualified as an FQHC with that came in our HIV grant, which is federal funding, and we know that there are going to be some forms of restrictions placed onto these funding, and we can't afford to do that, because that before since 2016 to become a full FQHC, that comes with millions of dollars of funding, also is aligned with HIV funding as well, so it's not just the base grants that we've seen, but it's the HIV funding, which is really critical. And we are seeing writing on walls in terms of if restrictions are placed on who we can serve, or the DDI activities that we do as well, and we have to change what we do that can have an impact, and we can't talk to them to accept funding. And also there's federal funding that goes through to our state fundings as well, so many other research, and we just have to work through to the federal funding.
Yeah, it's very scary, and it will keep us up to date.
We will do, thank you.
My final question is, how, do you have suggestions on how the city can partner to help support our transit?
I think, again, it's similar to some of the services we provide, it's providing there's forums, support groups where people can go, and they say they can have access to resources which are confidential, because I think that is so important at home, where people are afraid to be open about their current situation, also the support to family friends, and those are so important as well, because those are your support structures, and it can be confusing if you're just experiencing that for the first time, trying to understand what that means, or you're actually youth, going through, you're going through a real sort of, you've seen local incidents, it just happened recently, and I think that's one thing I'm proud about at Trillium, is we have staff members that provide services, counseling services, we have a pediatric team that provides support to, usually go through the front of pediatric, and we have those open conversations and help them navigate their feelings, give them access to support groups to have any writing permission, and help them get supported, and so to come up with options.
In terms of the support group, do we, and, do we have, do you have enough to meet the need, and if not, what are the barriers?
We definitely don't have enough, definitely we're seeing an increasing, in mental health, counseling, we have been fortunate, we've been standing up, expanding that for a main clinic that we're still providing to cancer, and pediatric, and so it's not a misery about the resources, the dollars, it's actually binding the behavioral health councils as well, so it's really important starting to build that future pipeline of talent that's going to go into providing healthcare services, and bringing them into Rochester as well. I think that's one thing is we're competing not just at the Rochester level, we're competing at the state and at the national level for health providers generally, so if we can bring more people to Rochester, which is something we can do as a city, then we can provide those type of opportunities to, which is, as well.
It does seem that that's an overarching issue with having enough of the health counselors, and it seems like there could be an opportunity for peers, and is that something that given the proper training could fill the gap?
That could be a way to complement the services, again, we need your licensed professionals, but we already provide peers and supporting patients for HIV. We have an individual host staff who is going with the trans community that provides that, and we technically have a counselor that is a family member, child, and this part of the trans community, but also there are, I think there's definitely an opportunity to attract peers and cross that right line of services.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Britten Harjers, President of Next Generation, Shouldn't Be A Transition.
Britten Harjers: As you all come, this is Britten Harjers, I'll start as a director of advocacy, if you would be able to, from the transgender, and I also prefer to follow the next generation in transition, and organization of Black trans men, and that's some people here in Rochester, New York, and across the rest of New York region, and of course, I'm an openly Black transgender person. Rochester is also one of the most multicultural, intersectional, and resilient LGBTQ plus communities in our state. That includes the most vibrant, involved, and overlooked transgender community in our area. We live here, we lead here, and many of us are longer here. In the last few years, the list of trans community members that we have lost continues to grow due to hit runs, overdose, untreated medical issues, suicide, and most important, working systematically. These were not just tragedies, they were very much so preventable. These lives deserve resources, dignity, and support to sustain being with us today. As more trans folks are fleeing from their states that are currently under attack, Rochester, as most of we know, is becoming a dangerous place. But we must ask, what does it mean to be a sanctuary city for LGBTQ plus people, but especially TGC lives? Because right now, Rochester has no fully affirming shelter systems, trans people are being turned away or placed in unsafe conditions, and let's be honest, safe spaces are only safe because of the people inside of them. We must train, equip, and support those people to create environments for dignity and humanity around motion. We are still, as a community, grieving the loss to Kat, a 15-year-old trans student that we lost from school to arts. Her passing is a call to action. Our youth is a reward. The picket signs, individuals, these are futures, but that begins in our schools. We are calling for implementation of LGBTQ plus devias and the Rochester City School District. This is not just for queer and trans you, but for all you, because when young people are taught to build community based on their intersections instead of their differences, they grow into leaders, and they know how to love and protect one another. To truly make Rochester a sanctuary, here are a few initiatives that I believe will turn it around. We need to create and fund a Rochester Trans Wellness and Equity Fund of $100,000 per week. This will support trans-led and trans-serving organizations, build a workforce development, especially for TGC community members. It will pour into our development for advocacy, but most importantly, build a youth suicide prevention for queer and transgender. We must ensure that gender-affirming shelter and housing options are in real, especially for you and those who are sister connected, because we all know that there is a pipeline to identify as trans and end their prison. And I think that's one thing I'm proud about at Trillion is we have staff members that provide services, counseling services. We have a pediatric team that provides support to the youth that go through the four pediatric. And we have those open conversations and helping to navigate their feelings. Give them access to support groups to have any, any, any right information. And they'll feel supported. So through that.
In terms of the, the support group, do we, and, and, do we have, do you have enough to meet the need and if not, what are the barriers?
We definitely don't have enough. Definitely we're seeing an increase in, in mental health counseling. We have been fortunate, we've been standing up, expanding that for a main clinic that was providing a counselor at the pediatric clinic. So it's not necessarily about the resources, the dollars. It's actually binding the, the behavioral health counselors as well. So it's really important starting to, to build that future pipeline of talent that's going to go into providing healthcare services. And we're going to go into Rochester as well. I think that's one thing is we're competing not just at the Rochester level, we're competing at the state and the national level for health providers generally. So if we can bring more, more people to Rochester, which is something we can do as a, as a city, then we can provide those type of opportunities to, to just.
It does seem that that's an overarching issue with having enough of the health counselors. And it seems like there could be an opportunity for peers. And is that something that given the proper training could fill in the gap?
That could be a way to complement the services. Again, we need your licensed professionals, but we already provide peers and supporting patients for HIV. We have an individual host staff who is going with a trans community that provides that. And we technically have a counselor that is a family member, child is part of the trans community. But so there are, I think there's definitely an opportunity to attract peers and cross that background services.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jean.
Our next speaker is Britten Harjers, President of Next Generation, Student and Transition. Welcome.
Good evening, good evening, councilmembers. Very much appreciated this invitation. As you all know, I'm Britten Harjers. I started as a director at the advocacy, a human being, a gender, and I also the president of the program of Next Generation and Transition, an organization of Black trans men and Latin people here in Rochester, New York, and across the rest of New York region. And of course, I am an openly Black transgender person. Rochester is also one of the most multicultural, intersectional, and resilient LGBTQ plus communities in our state. That includes the most vibrant, involved, and overlooked transgender, gender, and Latin community in our area. We live here, we lead here, and many of us are longer here. In the last few years, the list of trans community members that we have lost continues to grow due to hit runs, overdose, untreated medical issues, suicide, and most importantly, working systematically. These were not just tragedies, they were very much so prevalent. These lives deserve resources, dignity, and support to sustain being with us today. As more trans folks are fleeing from their states that are currently under attack, Rochester, as most of we know, is becoming a dangerous place. But we must ask, what does it mean to be a sanctuary city for LGBTQ plus people, but especially TGC lives? Because right now, Rochester has no fully affronting shelter systems, trans people are being turned away or placed in unsafe conditions. And let's be honest, safe spaces are only safe because of the people inside of them. We must train, equip, and support those people to create environments where dignity and humanity are not ocean. We are still, as a community, grieving the loss of Kat, a 15-year-old trans student that we lost from school to arts. Her passing is a call to action. Our youth is a reward. The picket signs, individuals, these are futures, but that begins in our schools. We are calling for implementation of LGBTQ plus liaisons in the Rochester City School District. This is not just for queer and trans you, but for all you. Because when young people are taught to build community based on their intersections instead of their differences, they grow into leaders and they know how to love and protect one another. To truly make Rochester a sanctuary, here are a few initiatives that I believe will turn it around. We need to create and fund a Rochester Trans Wellness and Equity Fund of $100,000 a week. This will support trans-led and trans-serving organizations, build a workforce development, especially for TGC community members. It will pour into our development for advocacy, but most importantly, build a new suicide prevention for queer and trans people. We must ensure that gender-friendly shelter and housing options are in real, especially for you and those who are sister connected. Because we all know that there is a pipeline to identify as trans and identify as a person. Again, install LGBTQ plus liaisons in all Rochester City School Districts to build cultures of belonging and mutual respect when we have community peers to join. Invest in employment equity initiatives that center TGC workers. And mandate LGBTQ plus cultural competency training across all city departments, especially public safety, health, housing, and our school districts. Sanctuary isn't symbolic, it's structural, and we have the ability to build the structure together. So I thank you for your time and I'm over to your questions.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions, councilmembers?
I do. Hi, Britten. I've always been a fan of your work and I'm a member of the LGBTQ community. So I'm feeling every little that you expressed. And what I'm also feeling, we know the issues that our people of color are dealing with in our community. And those issues are exacerbated when you add LGBTQ plus to that. And I'm thinking, and I'm so happy that you came with a list of things that you believe this community needs in order to provide safety and inclusion for our community. And I'm wondering if you would ever reached out to the mayor to petition the city of Rochester having an LGBTQ plus ambassador to deal with all of the things that you have made and ensure that every program, every dollar that is being pumped through this city is inclusive of all of our communities. And again, I appreciate everything that you do and I will certainly work with you to set that meeting up with the mayor to create that ambassador.
I have not looked for a connection. Yes, I'm with.
So, thank you so much for being here, Britten. For so many years, I've seen you respond to all kinds of harm that members of the LGBTQ plus community have experienced and also other, not others, in this community. In this moment, there feels like there is a greater sense of urgency than there has ever been, which I struggle to even say because it's always been an urgent issue, always. Trans people have always been under attack. LGBTQ, LGBTQ plus community members have always been under attack. But I do believe we have a unique opportunity here. I believe all my colleagues are deeply in support of ensuring that we are protecting our trans, our trans community members. Talk about the, which actions do we prioritize? What do we do first? How do we ensure that youth feel safe and are safe? Like what we, where do we begin in ensuring that there really is a sanctuary city, not just in name, but of action?
I want to be honest, I think that we have to, and when I say, a good version of the trans movement, I can really be that. We have one on a state level, there's also one in New York City. So we would be the first city outside of the five, five boroughs to create this. When we talk about that $100,000, that $100,000 seems like a huge number, but it's not when we're talking about the lives of youth. And I think with that money, we go in support of, into our peers. We know that we have a lack of mental health counselors and resources. So how many words appear in our community to pay them for showing up and literally teaching suicide prevention initiatives? People need to see folks, like when Latin Black people need to see folks having conversations about suicide. Youth need to see folks who are able to upfront and honestly say that at 15 years old, I was in the same exact position as Kat. And I'm just so thankful that I found that one person inside us who would almost want that here. When I think of Kat's life, I think about how many people were in that building. How many people were in that building? We talk about safe and secure spaces, being able to have people understand that we are what makes me safe and secure space and that should never happen again. I also think that just with more than just only with the $100,000, we watch this role in our community. We have big entities like Trillion, who was working on housing. We have the Center for Youth. But what does it really look like to support the grassroots, grassroots organizations that are on the ground, that are giving the way, that are partnering with the Mocha Center in Rochester, that is partnering with the Fly News World? Like how do we pour that in to amplify our resources?
Thank you. Britten, you saying that $100,000 seems like a lot, I actually think it sounds very minimal. Especially learning that we have 1,900-plus trans people just receiving care at Trillion, let alone how many there are, and knowing the barriers that they face. And it's helpful to know that there are examples of the state and in their city that we could model this after and understand how they're using it. So I thank you for that. In terms of the R C S D and making schools a safe and welcoming place for all, you know, I think we, I teach in the district and I think we struggle in a lot of ways, not just to be welcoming and inclusive for LGBTQ plus, but also for Black trans students and those who are the majority of our pupils. And especially in the intersection of those two, parents can sometimes be a big barrier where, you know, maybe teachers do want to support the youth, but the parents do not. And do you have thoughts about that?
I do. I mean, that having a, a hot, a human person home, and I think it's a simple thought at the time, like imagining that LGBTQ plus liaisons, if it was a void, if there was employment wars in our community, which we know that people shouldn't be jobs at this moment, but when we talk about ensuring that this doesn't happen, these liaisons aren't just for queer children. I actually think about people who live in homes where they hear any of the verbal slurs and attacks against LGBTQ plus communities. And to have someone in that building where they can feel safe, to say, we use, but then they actually, like, hey, there, I really, I really, really want to be trans with Ashley. But because of what's going on in my household, because of the things that I've heard, for someone to just remind this child that Ashley is a human being and to be able to build, we can't change everyone's home, but that's why it is the job of not the ability to be safe, but the people to be safe. And I think just to go back to something that's, that's the only, I guess, where we start, we can work on piece of legislation, but we don't have money to back up what is on that piece of paper. It would be a shame just to.
I, I appreciate that. And just thinking, you know, education is so important, especially to parents. You know, a lot of religious backgrounds and other backgrounds really come to, which is the issue of LGBTQ with, with a certain closed mindset. And knowing if they knew, you know, that misgendering or not supporting their child could lead to suicide, you know, and in a way it's a form of child abuse, I don't think they see it that way. And so are there few examples of education campaigns that, that are in schools that might be informing parents in town?
I think that we would be a beacon of not only we are state, we are state to create this, and that's what I'm looking to do. We have good voices in our community. And I think one thing that would strengthen this campaign is being a law officer, it could be, is voices of youth that are not here and that are not trans, that are impacted by this violence on that basis.
I have one additional question. A lot of things that I see happen that are, are successful and impactful happen in coalition spaces. Currently, can you talk about if there's an existence or coalition space where LGBTQ plus grassroots organizations providers are all meeting to work on a policy agenda and working in the United Department?
So there are a lot of state, our coalition that I see in their areas. It was through our chapter coalition that we have. I think that just to be 100% honest, we have been putting out fires on the community bases before the administration and even afterwards. So building a coalition can, let's just be honest and transparent. We have more individuals recently in our community, tend to be back times to meet as coalitions. A lot of it was very clear the other day, you know, state again, in the five stages of grief, queer, trans people are not getting out of this second stage before happens to start.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I am. I'd like to go back because I missed part of, the part of this hearing that really should have happened before, which was to have a moment, moment of silence for a human right. The young transgender was a victim of trans rights and at the school of arts. So I'd like to do that now, just have a moment of silence for her. Thank you. Next speaker is Charlie, the president of Rainbow Seniors Rock.
Good evening and thank you for inviting me to speak tonight. For those who don't know me, my name is Charlie Lyle and I am the president of the board and directors of Rainbow Seniors Rock. We're an LGBTQ plus organization with our main focus being the 50-plus population. I'm pleased to say that our community space is currently being used by over 14 different groups. Some of the trans group being here, other agencies that go have the space that we have are also meeting. We just moved into our new facility located at North Goodwin Street. We were using the Atos Hall in the southwest before. We were serving lunch, every Tuesday we'd do lunch, and we were serving lunch to 40 to 50 people. In our new space, we are now serving lunch to at least 60, 70 people. We're finding that every week we're getting two to three new people that are coming to Rochester. And asking why they're coming to Rochester, unbelievable is that Rochester is still affordable for housing. We have excellent medical care and it's one of the places recommended for LGBTQ people to retire to, which I never knew. The one thing that we're finding is we're basically using the same budget to feed 70 people that we were using to feed 50 people. So the price of food is increasing and it becomes more and more difficult all the time. As we age, there are also other unique problems for our population. Isolation, rejection by family, lack of transportation, medical issues, not to mention the rising costs of food, housing, and medications. And to get services, some of these people are forced to go back into the closet if they have to go into assisted living and places like that. My daughter, Dr. Megan Lytle Flint, is the first director of the Transgender Program for the University of Rochester. And she and I have been discussing the issues that are facing both of us. One of the biggest issues that we both see is transportation. She said that it's a big issue to get her clients to have the appropriate transportation to come to meetings, to meet with their counselors, and it's been very, very difficult for her. In some aspects, our group is having the same issue with transportation. As we age, it's hard to divide it now. The darkness, the bright lights of other cars are keeping people home. There's medical issues and lack of transportation really is equal to isolation. I've been talking with other LGBTQ organizations and finding out that some of them are having a step back in the funding that they are receiving because funders don't want to be associated with the term LGBTQ plus. And that has become a big issue. I have a friend that is doing HIV prevention all over the world and recently he has lost 70% of his funding and the other 30% is jeopardy already. I was asked why we don't apply for federal funding and our board feels that once you put that we're an LGBTQ plus agency into a grant, that automatically kind of prohibits federal funding coming our way. One place where we've been very lucky, we've got members of our group that do have money. We've done a survey and the income level of our members is anywhere from poverty to somewhat wealthy. And we've had two members who put up a match. If you will donate X amount of dollars within this month, we will match it. And I'm proud to say that our members have drawn in $30,000 for us in the last two months. I was asked recently that we're going to provide volunteers to help an upcoming bowling event, which we will be the recipient of money from it. And it's known that this transgender bowling is coming to this event. We're going to be helping with registration. And I was appalled to find out that with the registration, they have to put down the sex that they were born with, not how they personally identify now, that is religious stipulations of the Federal Bowling League. So you could, it has to be your sex at birth. And it's denying them who they really are. We've also talked with other people that have come to meetings. There's issues with passports and getting driver's license. Again, the whole issue of wanting to force people to designate how they were born, not how they identify. What can be done to assure the safety of the LGBTQ plus and specifically the trans and non-binary population? I have to say that's another million dollar question. What can we do? What I would do is encourage cultural training for the city staff, sorry, in the mayor's office, going down to the police department, to the workers, and even the custodians. Because if these people are trained, they might just be able to pass it on to family members and other people that we know, and it might be a slow way to spread acceptance through the community. Addressing crime is another puzzling issue. How do we change a culture that now allows, even encourages and normalizes the crime against LGBTQ plus population? It feels that a crime against these people and groups is growing and just because we're different, the crime has been accepted by the middle politician, shall we say, for lack of better. What we're doing is we're encouraging our members to go out, think of to event, go on at least a group. So it's not one person alone that can be singled out. It's a very small step, but that's what we're doing with our people. I would also encourage local politicians, law enforcement, to show up at various LGBTQ events, to show the support and that they are allies. I firmly believe that the political target has changed to hold people accountable for their actions, or needs to change to hold people accountable for their actions, to create laws that on all men and women, that we are created equal, that gay, bi, trans, non-binary people are given the same rights as every other citizen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Do you have any questions, councilmembers?
Yes, I'm Mr. Lyle.
Hello, dear.
I've been a fan of yours for more than two years.
We've worked together for many years.
And I miss you too. So, a couple of questions, but I'll start here. So it has been named in this space and beyond that folks want to see an inclusive sanctuary city policy that protects and they would love to see LGBTQ plus mentioned within a sanctuary city policy. How would you feel about that? And what do you think that would do for your community?
Rochester is an incredible city. We have wonderful things. We've lost Kodak and Xerox and big things, but we have so many other, the universities that are here that are wonderful. And from what I'm seeing from the people that are coming to our group, they're coming to Rochester because of these things. They feel safe here. So already, I think we have the beginnings of being a sanctuary city. It seems very inclusive and these people are doing their research. We've had people from Oregon, from Long Island, well, the price of New York City versus living in Rochester. Then itself speaks for itself. But people are researching Rochester and coming here. And like I said, for a sanctuary city, I really think we've got a great start. But anything, there's a lot of work to be done.
Yeah, I know that you have a few people in this audience who are really into championing something that is more inclusive to LGBTQ plus. And I'm hoping that you guys who are championing and putting together that legislation will also reach out to Mr. Lidle. And I'm wondering, in terms of the transportation issue, if your group would be open to a meeting with Reconnect Rochester, who's been working on transportation for over 10 years, just to talk about, and they have the ear of state legislatures as well as members of this council, to talk about what some of those transportation barriers are.
That sounds great. I'll leave to ask that of my daughter.
Great. And then lastly, I'll ask the same question that I asked Otrium about the ID. Has your group reached out to the county clerk's office at all to talk about?
We've had members of the county clerk's office at meetings that we've had. And they're going to keep us informed on what they find out, but they were feeling that, but this was back in November, that they were feeling that their hands were a little bit tied, that they were more unwilling to work with each individual person. Thank you.
So on the transportation issue, can you talk about what solutions look like in mind? Like is it funding for a driver's assistance, is it a program? Is it working with RTS to create accessible routes? What ideas does your group have around that issue?
Working with RTS seems to be the most logical. As we're looking at the idea of getting a bus and a driver, that then throws extra expense on us for insurance and extra training. So kind of living hand in mouth as an organization right now in our early stages. I would rather work with RTS or something that exists, even reaching out to Reach Rochester.
And for most of your membership, do they use the bus? Do they drive?
I would say about a quarter use the bus, the rest drive, and they're friendly enough with each other that there's... If somebody can't drive, somebody will pick them up. So we're working that out. But again, insurance-wise, if we say that we're creating a car rule, then that puts the liability on our organization.
Thank you. And then final question. Can you talk about the importance of third spaces like the one Rainbow Seniors Rock has created? And the longevity of our others when they have spaces that they can feel safe and interact with others?
I'm seeing that our space, we're actually outgrowing it already. We just opened in October. But because it is such a safe space, I was recently contacted by one of the local churches that wants to talk about LGBTQ issues, but they didn't want to do up their church, they didn't want to publicize it. So can we come to your place? And I told you the door to them, just let me know. We'll schedule the meeting. We'll have staff there to have it open for you and participate.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our last expert speaker is Amanda Paul-Pope, Policy Education Manager at Empire Justice Center. Yes, welcome here. When you are done speaking, if you can give it to Talia, which is on the video.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today as a colleague and a member of the community. My name is Amanda Paul-Pope, Policy Education Manager at Empire Justice Center. We are statewide and corporate, offering with seven offices across the state, including our Lawrence, T. Popps, and Rochester. Focus on this exchange work. Our work focuses on possible interference of popular law and involves three integrated surveys. We practice the law, we teach the law, we change the law.
Could you put this up for me just a second? Thank you.
All right. So we recognize if we disable students, homeowners, and tenants facing eviction, people facing tax foreclosure and crime victims. We represent numbers of five to eight to plus community who face unique challenges that often intersect with other issues via system compliance. Our LGBTQ rights project provides free legal services to low-income, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and trans clients throughout New York State outside of New York City. With a focus on anti-discrimination in employment, education, housing, credit, and public accommodations. We also assist with name and gender mark opportunities. Today I'm here to discuss some of the trends we're seeing as well as the ways that we believe Rochester City Council may be able to support our community and children. New York and Rochester, with its state of the art health providers, have become a safe haven for LGBTQ folks, which is particularly transgendered individuals. We are seeing inclusive families seeking people's services for medical care. Families with transgender children feel intense terror and are looking for a safe home as they are being actively targeted by the current federal institutions. We are proudly a part of a community that works to provide a secure, welcoming place for people to land and to channel meaning. The biggest trend we are experiencing is people calling regarding the executive orders and concerns about identification, such as if and how to change gender markers. The states let the federal government issue IDs such as record licenses and reverse applications, and therefore have control over the information contained within the extent to which the information can be changed. Clients confused and afraid of the repercussions of the executive orders often want to know if they should be attempting to change their gender markers on both state and federal ID and other protective measures. The future of transgender people's ability to receive accurate federal documentation is uncertain as cases challenging the executive orders work through the courts. We will not be able to give vast advice until these rules are fully litigated and implemented. We also see people calling to request assistance with name changes with increased urgency. With regards to education, we are worried about increased number of disability or race discrimination claims and unacceptably long wait times for those claims. For background, discrimination is illegal at both federal and state level. So claims can be filed at either the federal level at the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights, OCR, or the state level at the New York Division of Human Rights, DHR. However, decisions from the federal OCR had more teeth, as they would include ongoing monitoring. There are reports that our OCR investigations are frozen at this time. At DHR, wait times are already too long. We believe this will likely get worse as the state discern, oh, sorry, observes complaints that used to go through the federal government, and the best plan continues to grow. We are concerned about the impact on this school environment in response to the things happening at the federal level. We're hearing that students are being bullied to change their sexual orientation. We're certainly that students are feeling more involved in bullying. While it's too early to know if this is a trend, we are certain that schools will be implementing corrective interventions limiting life-saving preferred name and pronouns in attempts to align with federal doctrine. For example, we have seen issues here back home regarding the comfortable disruption in this program being there. We applaud this in the council for holding the meeting. We want to share some resources that are available to the public. And for more information, we'll be sharing more on our social media so people can refer to Empire Justice, Facebook, HR Content, and all of our Google's guides. Our school, our statewide school discrimination hotline helps any students or families concerned that they may have had a subject of discrimination in the school setting. Our Know Your Rights Guide is available on our website to help transgender and transgender-informed New Yorkers navigate the New York City Human Rights Law. The New York State Education Department's Legal Guide and Crime Prevention Aid support an upholding school environment for transgender and gender special students. And for those who are interested in name changes, we can contact us through our email address and for assistance, finally, name change institutions in Cali Court. The New York City Court also offers support for self-changing programs. We appreciate the prompt of support that the Rochester City Council offers. Below our recommendations, offer information on our services to families in need, including our hotline, our required and current law, undocumented, gender markers, and Know Your Rights Guide. Keep lines of communication open between the city council and city employees, which was mentioned earlier as well, including staying informed about the current law's framework as it is continuously changing and ensuring that staff and families have information available. At Empire Justice Center, our policy focus is currently at the state level. Anything that the council could do to provide support to the following would be appreciated. The shield law is sponsored by Rochester Assembly Member, Ferry Johnson, and this would help protect minors of the council states. This bill, opposed with the approval of existing shield laws, strengthen protection against information sharing with council states and the federal government, including private entities like hospitals and clinics. We're grateful for Assembly Member, Ferry Johnson's leadership on this issue and the great vote that Senator, Tonya Burke, and Assembly Member, Sarah Clark, Jenny Lutzberg, and DeMond G. Sibley are all joined as co-sponsors. The bill ensures that privacy and age changes would ensure that people who change their names through the court have similar privacy protections as every other type of age change, such as marriage, diversity, adoption, and in support for the structures and legal services and other services served at LGBTQI communities, such as the Mount Prophet Catholic Community Forum. This will help us continue our funding.
Counselor, do you have any questions?
Yes, sorry, I was still processing. The first question that I did mind was regarding bowling. I'm wondering if you have had the opportunity to review their either prevention or intervention plan regarding bowling, and is it inclusive of LGBTQ plus?
Thank you. I have not. I have worked with our policy department. What I can do is circle back with our LGBTQ clinic as they handle those claims and discrimination hotline. Can I just circle back with the council regarding that?
Thank you.
Counselor, yes. Surrounding the gender marker changes, I've received calls here in my office to, uh, around community concern. And it's very good to know, like, you are an institution we can refer folks to. Are we seeing service provided for free to community members?
Yeah.
Okay. And are you seeing an increase in people calling and asking for support around that?
I'm not sure currently what our case law is and what it has been as far as we're getting increasing calls. But if we can get that to, like, circle back to my question.
And I've seen previously, different organizations have come together to host clinics where people can walk in and get those services. I'm sure we'd be more than willing to partner with you all to do something like that in the future within City Hall to ensure that people know we support the LGBTQ community and this is a safe space and we can support. One of, with the bills we mentioned, you know, one of the things we do are memorializing resolutions, and I think it would be something I'm sure my colleagues would love to support. So that is an action item we believe you can take pretty quickly. Thank you. I am curious about the hotline. What services, what, if someone called the hotline, what would they get? Saying that they had discrim, they had experienced discrimination, is that, you know, according to that law, trans legal help or more towards counseling?
I think, so I think generally, I can just generally allow it. But I think it really depends on what the situation is for the family. We have attorneys staff would be able to take the call, or we'll have an email. Would be able to talk to the member, assess the situation, and if they have a great, good place to come for, or a duty of him there. But I think that would lose face then.
Wonderful. Do you happen to know the number and email?
I do, like, it's written.
If you could tell us that way, those who are listening at home would have that information to start.
So the phone number to call is 1-800-724-0400. Extension 5827. And the email address is school discrimination hotline at Empire Justice Power.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Looks like we're, uh, Counselor Smith.
My God, I'm about to call security. I'm wondering if you collect any data regarding, like, folks who call the hotline? It is always my fear that low-income, black and brown community members who are of LGBTQ plus have experienced so much harm that it has become normalized. They don't always know that they can reach out for assistance. And so, do you collect any of that data? So when we talk about targeted teachings and information sharing, we will have a better understanding on what neighborhoods, which communities we need to target.
I can definitely find that information out and see.
Thank you. And just to be clear, I just want to make sure, are you, do you want to know what information we're gathering? Or do you want to know exactly what information we're gathering? Or, really, I want to know about access. Who's accessing the hotline? Especially as it relates to, like, race discrimination or any discrimination as it relates to LGBTQ. And if you are gathering, like, income information, information on race, any demographics that you give us will certainly help. Because so many, so many harms happen that go unreported because many folks pay the money just... care. No one's paying attention, right?
Thank you very much. And I'm tired of the debate, and I think our entire year of the festival, you think so much. So now we will put the floor to the community, and I have listed people who would please sign up. Some of the sort of you know, sign up in person. All right, so we have Rowan Abell. Rowan will be followed by Oscar, who will give you.
Hello. Can you hear me or do I...
You are great.
You might want to go a little bit closer.
Hello, I am Rowan. My pronouns are related to them. I wrote something to say, but, and, but people have said it already, and it's not what I'll say anymore. So I, I want you to know that the decisions Rochester makes doesn't just affect Rochester. Rochester is a beacon of hope for surrounding counties. I actually grew up in Orleans County. I live in the city now, and I have for several years. But I grew up in Orleans County where we get, we got Rochester news. My mom worked for RCSE. You know, so we were still very ingrained in Rochester culture, even though we were 40 years away. And for all of the queer kids who were not out, because there was no... because there was no education, there was no support, there was nobody to talk about it. Nobody talked about suicide, nobody talked about the LGBTQI community, absolutely nothing. So Rochester is, like I said, a beacon of hope for people in Orleans County, in Tennessee County, and Livingston County, and all of these places that are majority-ridden areas. Um, and those queer people that are basically, there's basically nothing out there. Um, so we're a sanctuary city, not just for people outside of Rochester, but for outside of New York, but for all of us here, you know? Um, and our hearts always break when we hear about our trans youth die by suicide and yet another person who was attacked or murdered. And we just really deserve to be safe. And we don't feel safe. I know a single trans person who's like, yeah, everything's fine. So I appreciate everybody who has spoken already today and, um, all of their ideas and suggestions have been awesome. And I just appreciate that you're doing this, yeah, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oscar Barrett.
Welcome to the next one, sorry.
Okay. Uh, Cynthia M. Maxus. Nikki DeFerma. Nikki is followed by Rebecca Singers.
Hi, folks. Um, I guess first I'll just start with everything everybody else has heard of this stuff. Please do those bits. Um, but I also wanted to uplift the Safe Zone Initiative. The Safe Zone Initiative is an organization started right here in Rochester, and they have trainings all over the country. Um, all these culturally competent trainings we keep mentioning, they use them. And for school, the place I work for, although I'm not representing them right now, gives these trainings for free. Um, Jack to Rylands is considered sexual violence, and so we do these Safe Zone trainings in our community for free and in those global communities, like Orleans County, Genesee County, all the surrounding counties that I just mentioned. This is something that's super easy for you guys to implement in the schools, in city, uh, city workplaces, what have you. Um, it's really important to know specifically who will be giving these trainings. There's a lot of people that claim to be a safe place. There's a lot of people that are really well-meaning but are not LGBTQ themselves, just who mess up and make mistakes, which is okay. But we want to make sure that the people who are giving these trainings are queer individuals or individuals who have given these trainings with queer individuals so that we can ensure that the trainings are robust and will actually make a change in the culture here in Rochester. When we talk about what the LGBTQ+ community needs, obviously, there's a long list of things. We said healthcare, housing, et cetera. But in order for us to be able to access these things, the culture needs to change. And so out of everything else that you heard today, I urge you to make the cultural competency training a priority because that's where it starts, especially for you, especially in our schools. I can tell you, working as an, as a trans individual in R C S D is next to impossible because even though we have supportive administrative support all the time or supportive other staff members some of the time, there's always parents that don't support us. There's always other teachers that don't support us, and they're allowed to have their hateful views. I can't do anything about that. But it does make it impossible for me to work in these schools. It makes it impossible for trans people to work in these schools. And when kids don't have trans people to see, they don't know who they are, they don't know who their community is, and they feel hopeless. Things like, what happened will happen. Thank you so much for doing this and for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
Yes, so I appreciate, first of all, uh, I appreciate what you were saying about the safety zone training and what would need to happen in order for folks to actually put that tag on their organization and have it mean something? Because if we just say a training, there are staff turnovers, and all staff may not get that training. And so have you given some thought about ongoing activities that organizations should participate in in order for them to earn that title of safety zone?
Yes, absolutely. So the cool thing about the Safe Zone Initiative, which again, started right here in Rochester, which is also really cool, um, is that they urge people not to take a sticker if they don't feel like they should have a sticker. Um, they also, it's very, very important to them that the trainings are not mandatory and that if they do give a mandatory training, it's a very different type of training. Um, the audience in which the training is done for is, uh, flexible, depending on who they're giving the training to. Um, what I would recommend was we to have these people get recertified in this training every year, every few years. Um, I'm a trainer, so I've gotten trained as a trainer, meaning I can give the trainings to other safe zones. Um, but if we just had a couple people in city hall, in the school districts, that go around that are trained, they can give these trainings all the time. Um, they're a couple hours, so that they're extensive and, again, robust and not just a sticker, here you go, you know how to use pronouns. But it's, it's more intense than that. Um, and it creates a safe culture, which again, you can't have a safe zone without safe people. So it creates safe people while also, uh, mediating those, uh, those questions that are hard for people to answer. They give a space for people who really are knowledgeable in the LGBTQI community and that means that they want to be. And it's a safe place for others who are not in the community to learn about the community and to learn how to be a safe person for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Followed by Dr. K. Lucas.
Good afternoon, council members, and thank you so much for being here. Thank you for having such a supportive environment in which I have this conversation. My name is Rebecca Singers, and I am the head pastor at Third Presbyterian Church. I am also a member of the Rochester Community Table, a gathering of people, some fifty people, representing non-profit and religious organizations as well as committed individuals from across the city who are working to remain informed and active in the face of challenges to human rights across the country and across the spectrum. Rochester has always stood, if you will, perfectly for welcoming and inclusion. It was ahead of other parts of the country on the issue of abolition, on women's suffrage, on gay rights. I am proud to say that my congregation has also been at the forefront on all of those movements in their term. And part of the uniqueness of this community is its willingness to look injustice in the face and to welcome all persons regardless of any possible area of exclusion. So we at Third Church and at the Rochester Community Table are concerned about the state of the nation, the erosion of rights at the federal level that we see cascading down to the local level. Cuts to federal funding, as you well know, are targeted to harm LGBTQIA+ persons, especially those requiring gender-affirming care. The nation's research field on improving the health of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Americans is collapsing. We are so grateful to have Trillium here and hear about the struggles and the challenges that they are facing. More than two hundred and seventy grants totaling at least a hundred and twenty-five million of unspent funds have been eliminated, though according to researchers, the true sum is likely much greater. The SAVE Act has passed the federal House and is in the Senate, an act which will directly affect us all as it requires a voter show version to commit or a passport in order to vote, but it's designed particularly to target trans persons. The Marriage Equality Act has ever attacked with efforts to ban same-sex marriage brought before legislatures in nine states. As a cis, hetero, white woman, a clergy person in the Presbyterian Church USA, and a member of the Rochester Community Table, I am here to speak out for the rights of those who are being targeted and marginalized in these and other acts. Mayor Evans spoke with the Rock Community Table and shared his commitment to the LGBTQIA+ population serving as city employees. I'm here to call on the city council to affirm their commitment to this community in Rochester in total, not just city employees, but all residents, that they might live in welcome and receive the care and support they need across the spectrum, physically, mentally, emotionally, spiritually, financially, to live lives of freedom and hope alongside all of Rochester's citizens.
Thank you. And I have, I have a question. First, thank you for all you do. Thank you for being here. Um, and while we also were committed, what does that look like to you? Are you talking, is it a press conference? Is it a resolution?
I love the idea that you were talking about earlier with having the expansion of the Sanctuary City include. As per how does it felt and held by those who are experiencing marginalization, uh, uh, in, in, included within our, our identity as a sanctuary city? I think the more, once again, that we can have those conversations, I am also more than willing for my church to be a welcoming space and a space that's willing to hold trainings, um, to help people to understand and to support others, and we support you doing it right here as I believe, uh, 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 Councilmember Lupien suggested, within city council, I think the more education and the more support that we show, uh, sort of loud and proud, the better I believe for all of, all concerned.
Councilmember Martin Smith and I have introduced legislation to include stronger sanctuary city protections as well as including the LGBTQI community. We've worked on that with so many of this audience. So keep that in mind when it comes before us to make sure to express that so that the rest of our colleagues will also support it.
It is my goal to be as much of an ally as possible.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to do that. Thank you for the opportunity here.
Dr. Curtis Lucas is followed by Akira Sanval.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Interesting, and Dr. Curtis Lucas, and I thank you for having this forum this evening and for all the amazing speakers that have come before you. I don't have anything new to add from what was already said, but I do hope that my words echo and help you with what has been said. So since the results of the 2024 election were announced, a group of community members and advocates known as the Rock Community Table have been getting ready to discuss the challenges our community is facing as a result of federal policy directives and identify ways to mitigate the harm those directives are causing to constituents. Many of these new executive orders are threatening housing, education, healthcare, and diversity equity and inclusion initiatives, including LGBTQ+ rights and a host of other social justice issues. Specifically, as we are witnessing the assault on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives with the rollback of urban action rights and increasing federal funds for D B I programs, a unique spot has been focused on members of the transgender community. Black transgender women disproportionately bear the wrong compliance, discrimination, and other negative societal outcomes due to the intersecting pressures of racism, sexism, and transphobia. They face significant barriers in areas like employment, housing, and healthcare and are overrepresented as victims of genocide, which is the murder of women simply because of their gender. The horrific event at School of V R's, at School of V R's last conference, when a fifteen-year-old transgender girl, Kat, found herself in a state of crisis, which ultimately ended her life, is an example of the pain, grief, uncertainty, and fear many in the LGBTQ+ community are facing as they aim to merely live their lives. Rochester, even with its flaws, is seen as diverse, welcoming, and inclusive community. Mayor Evans met with members of the Rock Community Table in February and affirmed his commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts and to uphold the rights of all city employees, including the LGBTQ+ populations. As an ally, I am now calling on the council to ensure the state of protection and equitable treatment of all Rochester residents and especially those who identify as transgender and African. We are calling on you to be resolute in your support of this community and in your condemnation of those who seek to harm them by words, by deeds, or by acting towards.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Martin Smith.
Dr. Lucas, you have a huge responsibility, and I love the way that you are delivering that responsibility for our communities. And I do, um, believe, or I've heard, that the Rochester Community Table has a number of subgroups, and I'm wondering if LGBTQ+ is one of those subgroups? If not, if you could directly reach out to Gritten Harders, who spoke earlier, to talk to Gritten about that. And I also know that there is a group, Grants Pass Resistance, that's been working on LGBTQ housing and getting all of that stuff into a sanctuary city policy. And I believe that they are going to be putting out a pledge next week, and I would encourage you to get with them to speak about, um, the Rock Community Table signing on to it. But that's what we're hoping to make it out.
Akira Sanval. Erin Coe. Erin is followed by Chrissy Miller.
Good evening. Thank you for holding this meeting to bring in more feedback from the community and connect on the important issues. Uh, I wanted to stand up to speak just to kind of reinforce a lot of the same things that others are saying and add to the voices for the concern and care for our LGBTQ+ community. Uh, some of the important items that I have heard and seen, and I guess more so heard, that are concerns in our community, uh, it is support for trans youth in our Rochester schools. I know another people have already spoke about, so I don't need to go too much more detail, but I do just want to reinforce that that is an urgent need, and we do need to get more of these training faculty and staff and supporters of trans youth in our school system. Um, so I'm grateful for all the others who have already spoke about ways that we could do so. Uh, creating more access to resources and teaching how to, how to access or find access to the resources versus just, um, leaving them to kind of find it on their own. And also, uh, I think hiring trans staff would definitely be a great entrust in the school system and providing protections for the staff from discrimination. Additionally, the LGBTQ+ community is greatly impacted by homelessness. Um, so trying to increase housing for, uh, the black community and reducing the barriers to, uh, opportunities and services like the shelters. Because right now, there aren't a lot of barriers to, um, people who are LGBTQ+ high uh, to be able to, uh, be able to safely and comfortably use those resources. So I just want to ask that you take initiative to continue to support our community members and make sure they feel safe and supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Followed by Lisa Park.
Hi, I'm Mr. President of the Board. I have so many happy memories. I'll talk to you more. I am here to speak about... Just a... Okay, let's see. I had a dream, and my dream was to have a gated community for our children, for their families, to have a safe place for all to live in and possibly without being fearful and be protected. Our children, they cannot live in apartments with a lot of noise, and that affects our children. And I just want to see something different where we can have a gated community, a safe place for our families to have, and to have the houses furnished for them so they don't have to worry about too much at home. They have a lot on their plate to take care of their children. So how can we help them by doing that? And this is my dream, to see that happen in our city. We do not have it in our city. Now, in one of the states they do have it, but it's for the adults, for the adults with disabilities. But I would like to see our children, our families, come in, safe places for our families to have, our children to have safe places to play and live to, and don't have to worry about them. That's a rock.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Just a question or statement, because I think Ms. Miller raised a very important issue because today we were talking about LGBTQ plus rights. We don't have a public hearing talking about adults with disabilities or parents or families with disabilities. And so for you to show up in this space to make sure that we acknowledge that those with disabilities are also a marginalized and vulnerable community. Thank you for stating that, and we hope to hear more about the impact of what you're seeing when we go into our housing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I signed that.
For housing.
But I'm also on for housing. I was just going to talk about housing.
Okay, yeah. I think you're not. Some others have done that as well. Brian Makeup, did you need to sign up for housing? Yes. Mujid. It was on as well. So I think both signed. Mr. Dunson, do you want to talk about housing or LGBTQ?
Oh, no, actually, I have a question.
Okay. And Mujid is followed by Akira Lewis.
Good evening, everyone. I am so grateful that y'all are allowing us a platform to be heard. My name is Mujid Dunson, and I am a COVID leader. I'm also going to ride. And I'm just here as a concerned father. You know, I have a daughter that goes to SOB. She knew Caitlin, and it affected her in manners in which, like, it hurt me to the fact that I don't even know how to protect it. You know? I was out at work. I couldn't think of it. I couldn't think straight. I couldn't. My mom was all over the place, and I didn't know what happened. All I knew was a chap committed suicide at the school, and they're saying she walked off the building. So I need to get in this right here. I need to get in the fight. I need to get better aligned with those that are in the LGBTQ community and find my footing in it. Like, I have open communication with so many of y'all, and you know, like, I love all of them. You know, and in addition to that, because like, I have a mentor that sat back and told me that we cannot build without love. And I truly believe that. So I'm here in support with solidarity of all my people, you know? And I want to educate myself better. I want to be there for whoever in any capacity in which I can. And I just want to be present, you know, because this really means so much to me. Thank you.
Akira Lewis. Are there any other speakers who would like to speak on the matter about LGBTQ rights?
Mayor.
Where's?
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Sammy, how you doing?
Hello.
Kim.
Good evening. My name is Ben Smith. I am the president and CEO of Recovery House Rochester. I'm also a founding member and president of the New York State Alliance of Recovery Residences, which is a statewide affiliate that's part of a national network of sober living communities. And I'm happy to share that recovery housing through the Office of Addiction Services has now become recognized as a viable housing resource for what we call the special needs population. That's men and women who are seeking a new way of living from SUD and mental health, not in a shelter, not in a transitional housing program, but a recovery housing program which fits the individual who is seeking that way. So my hope here is that we continue having a conversation about how we, as a municipality, embrace this regulation in our community so that people get the adequate level of housing in this community. Not only is the certification voluntary, but there's also been some funding attached to it. Seed funding, $75,000 is not a lot of money to establish a six-bed house. However, when I got started in 2002, there were no dollars. So I'm happy for the seed money that has been established through the Office of Addiction Services known as Oasis here in New York. I'm also happy because I'm hoping that as a community, we can find a way to be able to establish more sober living communities in our community. You're probably saying, so what's the benefit to us, Ben? Get to the point. I'm glad you asked that question. I like people to ask good questions. The point is that when we talk about the contribution of people living a new way of life, we are good employees. You don't have to make us come to work. We want to come to work because we have something to prove, right? We want to be able to make amends to our community. We are good fathers. We are good mothers. And oh, by the way, we pay taxes. We don't want to just rent. We want to become homeowners, right? Because that does what for our community? That makes our community what we all want, right? And that's better. I love seeing smiles on your faces. It tells me you're feeling what I'm saying. And so, as you can tell, I'm very passionate about this new regulation, this new certification. My organization, for three years, worked with Oasis to draft this regulation. So my 22 years of experience of working all across the country, working with other communities where they fund this kind of project, it's written into the budget. That's how valuable it is. So this is not a donation. This is not a contribution. This is an investment. Not in brick and mortar necessarily, but in people who will buy homes. We don't want people to be okay with an apartment. I want to see a whole sober neighborhood before I leave the industry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beautiful vision. Is there another speaker? The hearing on LGBTQ rights will be closed. Could take a privilege and give us a five-minute break before we start the housing hearing.
Oh, that wasn't the housing hearing?
It wasn't. Why? I don't...
I can't even focus the agenda, man.
I hope you stick around because we've got a lot of time for that.
Wow, I so appreciate y'all pushing.
I knew you were coming for housing, but you know what?
Yes, y'all, I guess.
Let's stick around. So after this call.
Okay. So... Yeah, that's right. Sorry. Yeah.
Before I get started, the public can take their seats. And if you are not staying for the housing hearing, you should hear the speakers. The public hearing will now be had in the following manner. Housing. As we all know, housing is an important issue to our community, and it's important to city councils to understand expert testimony and the members of the community, what city council and the city Rochester can do to improve the situation regarding housing. Our first speaker is Malika Connor, Coalition Coordinator, Right to Counsel, New York City Coalition.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you. Um, okay. Everybody here yet? Okay, awesome. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Malika Connor. I was born and raised here in Rochester, and also the Coalition Coordinator for the Rights to Climate Coalition. We are a 10-footed coalition that formed in 2014 to disrupt eviction court as a center of displacement and stop the eviction crisis that has threatened our families, our neighborhoods, and our homes for too long. We won and led the campaign to establish a right to counsel for tenants facing eviction in New York City, making New York City the first place in the nation to establish such a right, and are now leading a campaign to expand and strengthen the right to counsel across New York City. So, what is right to counsel? And what are the benefits of tenants having access to counsel in eviction cases? So, right to counsel fundamentally guarantees tenants the right to a free lawyer when facing eviction in court. In years following right to counsel enactment in New York City, its success has been undeniable. Evictions plummeted, landlords sued tenants less, and almost everyone, at least eighty-four percent, of tenants who have a right to counsel stayed in their homes. Right to counsel has also helped develop a body of more just case law, lowered tenants' rents, helped stabilize communities, and has forced landlords to make repairs. That success has spread across the country, sparking a national movement for right to counsel. And today, more than twenty cities, states, and counties across the US have tenured right to counsel laws, with Westchester County most recently passing their own right to counsel at the county level in 2023. I want to be clear, right to counsel is not just about attorneys. It's about preventing evictions and keeping people housed. Evictions impact people's education, employment, relationships, physical and mental health, and so much more. And the positive impacts of right to counsel in eviction cases on communities in New York and across the country are multiple and well-known. Just to share a couple statistics. Data from across the country has demonstrated that RITC keeps people in their homes and ensures landlords from suing tenants for eviction in the first place. After San Francisco passed right to counsel, the city's eviction filing rate dropped ten percent in the first year. And in Connecticut, of the eighty percent of people who sought to avoid eviction, seventy-six percent were successful. Those are just two examples, the Darren line. A 2023 study conducted by Princeton University, the US Census Bureau, and others found that evictions have a disproportionate impact on Black women and children. With about a quarter of Black children under the age of five living in households facing evictions. A recent study also found that right to counsel is linked to a reduced risk of adverse birth outcomes among medically insured mothers. This shows how eviction prevention through the right to counsel does more than just keep people housed. It also contributes to better mental, or maternal and child health. And there's more to right to counsel than these measures. Right? There are things that we can't measure in numbers. Right to counsel helps protect tenants' rights and strengthens our communities in a number of ways. These include changing the power relationship between landlords and tenants in and outside of courts. So when tenants have a right to a lawyer, it reaffirms that tenants are worthy of representation, to know their rights, to be respected, and that the government will guarantee their legal counsel. Right? This is not dependent on clumping. This is not, oh, someone give them. This is for everyone, it's a guarantee. It also changes landlord behavior. For many landlords, evictions are essential to their business model. Landlords are good tenants because they have power, because the courts, they know the courts will take what they say at face value, and because pushing tenants out can sometimes increase their profits, not because the law necessarily supports them. And so, right to counsel helps disrupt this business model by keeping tenants in their homes and stopping displacement. And we know across New York State, by and by, where right to counsel laws would not exist, most tenants do not have attorneys. So, no from one to two percent. Folks who may have attorneys when they're in eviction court, but over ninety percent are not going to. So there's a tremendous structure, tremendously, a power balance there. And so, right to counsel also empowers tenants. Tenants feel less stressed and fear, knowing that they have the right to be able to represent in court, which helps them navigate corporate confidence and success, and bolting them to hold their limits accountable for due repairs. It also supports tenant organizing. Right to counsel serves as a know-your-rights tool and helps bring tenants together. The success of right to counsel also fosters close partnership between tenants, organizers, and attorneys, which helps everyone navigate the courts more effectively, share knowledge of history, and provide training. And then to zero in on how right to counsel would really impact folks here in Rochester, there's a number of ways that having right to counsel enacted at the city level could benefit tenants. So first, I want to congratulate the tenant movement in Rochester and the city council for passing historically the provision protections, which give tenants the right to build their tenancy, enhance the right to organize, and provide protections against unreasonable rent hikes. As a tenant movement in New York State, we know that the cause of eviction and the right to counsel both hand in hand and are stronger when used together. Good cause of eviction, like many protections, can only be raised as a defense in an eviction case. And we know the best way to get these rights to justly upheld and enforced in court is for tenants to have the right to a right to counsel lawyer fighting alongside them. According to data collected by the Office of Court Administration, which oversees all the courts across the state, since the start of the pandemic, landlords have sued nearly twenty-four thousand households in Rochester City Court, although it's not looking at the county. And I say household because it's not one person, it's not one tenant. There are, you know, upward, you know, two, three, four, five hundred homes that are being displaced. And so, just this, just last year alone, so in 2024, that number was more than five thousand. So we're looking at lots of people who would be impacted here. And we know with good cause and right to counsel combined, we can expect to see these numbers plummet. So for example, in New York City, with right to counsel alone, eviction filing went down by thirty percent. And when combined with good cause, we expect evictions to go down even more because we're closely disincentivizing landlords from evicting folks when there isn't good cause, right? And then, you know, within our Coalition on Right to Counsel, we did commission a report in 2022 with the advisory firm Stout to estimate the impact of right to counsel on communities outside of New York City, including here in Rochester. And the report found that approximately ninety-seven percent of tenants who appear to be in eviction court would benefit from right to counsel. With right to counsel in place, eviction files could decrease by at least twenty percent because, you know, right to counsel, again, is a part of landlords to use evictions as a tactic to harass displaced folks. Right to counsel could also reduce the number of default judgments which happen when a tenant shows up in court or doesn't show up in court and then automatically the court issues an eviction warrant. So we can expect those to decrease by thirty-two percent. And then, there is also a tremendous amount of, you know, fiscal benefit to right to counsel. So, we estimate that right to counsel laws could save the state, the local governments, millions of public dollars, over and above the costs of what it, you know, the housing would have to put in to provide the right to counsel that would otherwise be spent on shelter, commuter emergency room costs, homeless services, and more, right? Because if we're keeping people housed and not in the streets, not in the shelters, that helps us save money that would otherwise go to those services. And so, the cost savings around there would be anywhere from three to six dollars per dollar invested in right to counsel. So I know I've said a lot, and all those statistics and studies, but I hope that I've demonstrated today that by establishing a right to counsel for tenants facing eviction here in Rochester, it would have an overwhelming and positive impact on communities across the city by helping to uphold tenants' rights and keep people housed. So thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you so much.
You mentioned the standard of evictions with ninety-three percent because of right to counsel. Is that statewide? Is that concentrated in specific areas?
Yeah, so the concrete thirty percent number was for New York City. The statewide estimate, and the number that we have actually doesn't include New York City because we wanted to focus on everywhere outside. So the outside of New York City number, barring any other tenant protections, is at least twenty percent. So we anticipate that to grow up. But we can say confident that it was twenty percent. The values were totally down at this twenty percent.
So this body definitely has an interest in the right to counsel legislation. We've also received recommendations from RACE in support of right to counsel. Can you talk a bit about, so let's say we pass this. How are tenants made aware of this new rights? What education strategies have you seen that are effective both to landlords and tenants?
So the public outreach and education component of this is really essential. Tenants need to know that they have the right in order to claim it in court. And so, it would require multiple forms of outreach, partnership with community organizations to make sure that that is happening on the ground. But we would also want to make sure that the city is doing outreach, sending mailers to folks across the city, letting them know that, you know, they're sued for eviction, they have the right to an attorney. We would also want to make sure that, you know, when the courts send out, you know, the notices, that includes and there is know your rights information for tenants so that they know when they get to court that they can claim this right. So we would want to make sure that all parties know that people have, know that tenants have this right and that they're able to claim it effectively.
Thank you so much. And I would request that you submit in writing some of the statistics that you stated. They're wonderful. Natalia will take it from you, and make sure we get a copy. Thank you so much. Next, we have Elsia Kepke, organizer at the Worker Justice Center.
Thank you. Happy to be able to have a conversation on housing challenges and how the urgent need to raise the minimum wage connects to housing difficulties. I'm Elsia Kepke, the organizer for the Worker Justice Center of New York here in Rochester. Worker Justice Center focuses on, focuses around low-wage immigrant workers whose vulnerability stems largely from the injustices of the immigration system. I'm also proud to serve as one of three primary school chairs of the Policy Working Group for Housing and Income, who are a big part of priorities that focus on collective pursuit towards upper mobility for Rochester. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak because we know that stagnant wages are a major part of the problem, especially as costs continue to rise while wages stay flat. The issue with Rochester is that only half of Rochester workers earn a living wage. So that's what my talk will be focused on and how that would impact housing. So despite, despite, excuse me, low unemployment rates, families in Rochester and rural communities are experiencing quite strict financial stress. According to a 2023 report by the Children's Agenda, a staggering seventy-six percent of Rochester parents earning less than fifty thousand struggle to manage the rising cost of rent and or mortgage of those forty percent of Rochester families overall. For families polled within the same report, this meant to be able to pay rent, sixty-one percent of families were rationed food until the next paycheck. In 2022, Rochester experienced the largest rent increase in the entire Northeast, surpassing even New York City and Boston. The stark reality highlights the prevalence of poverty wages in our community, wages that fail to keep up with the rising cost of living. It's clear that we must urgently increase wages to ensure that working people in our community can live with dignity and security. Housing is not only a matter of affordability, it's also about quality stability. In that same report, parents cited that finding housing that is safe, stable, and appropriate for our child's needs is a challenge. When we consider the systemic impact of policies that have historically left local groups outside of the American Dream for Ownership, we must act intentionally to close disparities driven by race and ethnicity. A study of how, excuse me, a study of how minimum wage affects low-wage areas from positive wage effects, especially in high-impact families, but do not protect adverse effects on employment, weekly hours, or annual weeks work. We do not find negative employment effects in London and Black families in high-impact communities, we find substantial declines in household and child poverty. It's a moral imperative and absolutely critical for the healthy future of our community to ensure that no one is impoverished. Nobody knows what's best for our community better than residents. In a 2023 poll, over sixty percent of Rochester residents across the political spectrum agree that the minimum wage should be at least twenty dollars an hour. Raising wages is the most effective policy to disrupt the cycle of poverty. Raising the minimum wage to reach up to true living wage is a critical step toward self-sufficiency and ensure current income can sustain family growth, development, and security. In 2023, after a period of rapid inflation, Governor Hope Forman's state legislator struggled to compromise to raise the minimum wage and establish a threshold for future increases. This minimum threshold, however, was not nearing enough to accommodate the rising cost of food, housing, utility, and the cost of being able to survive in rural communities. Minimum wage is a floor, and we must work across sector and government and the industry to ensure that we are working towards living wages and not just bare minimum. Cornell study found that raising New York's minimum wage from twenty-one to twenty-five will create seventy-five thousand five hundred and thirty-nine jobs statewide, with five thousand in Rochester alone. Without action, Rochester will continue to lag in job creation and economic security. Ultimately, this focus on potential side of minimum wage ignores the latest research and much of the evidence that recently increased the minimum wage would create good jobs with higher wages, security, and higher productivity. Raising our minimum wage will not only help families meet essential living expenses, implement a living wage standard, but also ensure our income is sufficient to build wealth. Our responsibility for alleviating economic hardship is borne by all levels of government. It's the city, so the city of Rochester has a tremendous role to play. In fact, cities are increasingly setting their own minimum wages, and this trend has accelerated sharply in recent years. While in 2010, there were only three cities with their own minimum wages exceeding the state or federal standard, by 2020, there were forty-two. Early evidence suggests that the impact of the policy on wages and employment to date has been broadly similar to the evidence on state and federal minimum wages. Overall, city-level minimum wages seem to be able to tailor the policy to the local economic environment without imposing substantial distortions and allocation of labor and businesses across. Rochester cannot wait for all of them. They won't save us. Our city's economy level leaders must tackle the affordability crisis by raising the local minimum wage to a living wage. It's currently estimated, according to MIT, to be near twenty-three dollars an hour with future raises to a confirmed increase in cost of living. This approach will directly address the affordability crisis to be faced. I'm here today to help uplift what's possible as no amount of budgeting can make up for a canonical reductions. And we can make this happen through a coalition of worker centers, labor unions, and organizations that are pushing to raise this. Finally, the city council and the mayor must pass the legislation to ensure all Rochester's get a fair wage. Rochester knows what's best. We set our wages based on the needs of our community. A living wage provides families with the financial security needed to invest in our communities, whether through education, healthcare, or homeownership. This strengthens the fabric of an inclusive community all while reducing economic disparities over time. Thank you.
Thank you for such a strong, clear statement. You did admit to your words, and I really appreciate that. Are there any cities within New York State that have created their own local minimum wage?
Now, if the good is farther along the path than us, so we're partnering with Tocqueens County to learn from what's worked there, whether it be through the city or county route. So it's definitely a step further from us, and New York City is launching very soon. So this is strong, there is a strength in Rochester.
For sure, and we have led many things, so it's well within our capacity to lead up this issue.
I was talking to, I'll even look at disparity in practice by what we're doing here. That was the reason. So, thank you all for your attention.
Well, Elsia, I know that you have, your organization has done some work to do the research on legality of local minimum wage. And it's maybe a misconception that we're not able to do it at the local level. Can we speak to that?
Absolutely. So, right now, there's a very flimsy precedent set in like nineteen sixty-something saying, it essentially says, you can't do this because we said so. So what we have is partners from Cornell and also the National Employment Law Project working on this draft legislation to be able to, once this is introduced, to actually be able to defend and be able to make this a clear policy. Because right now, that many things, it's just way too arbitrary. So while it hasn't happened yet, it's possible, and we have orders to back this up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Thank you for all of the data points. And I'm wondering if you could either summarize or link again within the data how raising the income directly impacts the housing prices?
Yes, so raising income will address the fact that we are seeing an unprecedented skyrocket. But I think what's really exciting about this is that the data is still evolving because this has happened very recently with these sharp changes we've had. Right now, I'm just very long-winded with this one. So right now, we don't have a parent where New York City makes a little bit more than we do. And the belief is that housing is different there, transportation is here. So what I'm really excited about is to cite data from New York City, but at the same time, to understand that we need to make this our own because our challenges are so unique. So New York City's industry thrived after the minimum wage increased by 15 to 30%. I think it's more about, and the data is forthcoming. I have a lot to not argue with, but I will say that just a $1 increase lets a very strong outcomes and even just child poverty. So that's where we're trying to focus because the need is so great in Rochester. But the main factors are coming from New York City, which is very exciting. And I have to unpage your second server.
That would be great. Thank you so much. Our next speaker is our reporter, Detective Director of Rochester and Milwaukee Initiative. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening and hello. And thank you so much to Rob, the council members Mary Muñez, Kim Smith, and Sam Martin for holding this important discussion on housing. At our MAPP, we regularly engage with community members impacted by poverty. Across the ages, the backgrounds, the neighborhoods, we hear one concern more than any other, and that's about housing. Too many of our neighbors are living in unsafe or unfavorable conditions and constantly worried that one rent increase could push them out of their homes. Here are some of the things I've heard. Decent affordable housing is essential and should be a right. I think that people lack dignity when they live in decrepit neighborhoods. These conditions foster instability and crime. There's no affordable housing for minimum wage workers. We're encouraged by the city council's commitment to addressing poverty, and we believe that you can play a vital role in improving housing access and stability. We urge you to continue implementing the Housing Quality Task Force recommendations and take action to expand the supply of quality housing. This includes incentives for reconstruction and substantial rehab projects, especially those creating homeownership opportunities. This problem is dire. The Urban Institute's upward mobility initiative tracks housing availability and found that in the city of Rochester, there are only 40 rental units available for extremely low-income individuals and 77 units for very low-income. We also recognize that building inclusive, mixed-income neighborhoods requires zoning that supports a variety of housing types and densities. Through the Zoning Alignment Project, the city has the opportunity to tailor changes that reflect the needs and assets of each neighborhood. We urge you to focus on equity and choice, ensuring that all residents, regardless of race or income, have options to live in communities that meet their needs. Rochester must have housing at all price points, in all areas of the city. We also encourage the city to take further steps toward housing stability. That includes exploring rent stabilization policies and closely monitoring the implementation of good cause eviction. While it's an important step forward, and we applaud the city for passing good cause eviction, the rent increases it allows may still be affordable for many families. Additional solutions may be resupply, increased funding for first-time home wire programs, and construction subsidies to help working families access stable homeownership. At the state level, our MAPP strongly supports the Housing Access Voucher Program, HAVP, a flexible, statewide housing voucher for people facing or experiencing homelessness. Unlike Section 8, HAVP would be available to everyone, regardless of immigration status or criminal record, and it would help stabilize both tenants and landlords. We also support a long overdue increase to the state shelter allowance, which no longer covers the cost of any state quality housing. These programs matter because they address one of the root causes of our high housing prices: low incomes. Roxanne did a great job of diving into the details about that. And while broader than housing alone, we urge the city to use its influence to support the creation of good jobs that pay living wage wages and bringing jobs to the city and to residents so that they can get to those jobs. Finally, amid all the challenges, we consistently hear this: People want to stay in their neighborhoods. They love the places they live and want to remain there, putting down roots and raising families. But to do that, those neighborhoods must offer more than just housing. They need access to food, safety, schools, jobs, healthcare, and community spaces that connect people to opportunity and to one another. Our MAPP envisions a Rochester where every neighborhood is safe, inclusive, and full of possibilities. Thank you for your time and leadership in helping make that vision a reality.
Councilmember.
Our reporter, I would say thank you for your time and leadership. It has been wonderful to see you out at grassroots on the front line, urging the passing of HAVP. You have invited the commissioner or acting commissioner at the time to dive into the space and allow others to ask questions. And my specific question is related to the Housing Quality Task Force. So it was stated that the recommendations that came out of that task force were primarily administrative recommendations pertaining to quality housing. And I'm wondering if you believe that there needs to be a fifth two of the Housing Quality Task Force that focuses more on housing stability and affordability? And if you believe that that fifth two needs to happen, what can we do to support you in doing that?
Yeah, so I would say that the initial Housing Quality Task Force was set out to look at COVID enforcement and to make sure that housing was safe for all residents. And it was also stated to us that we wanted to be able to make recommendations that were in the purview of the mayor's duties, right? Like something that the mayor did do. And so we kind of focused in our work on that, on those items. I believe that housing is such a big issue here that we have to expand the work. We need to look at housing supply. We need to look at the market. We need to look at the demand. We need to look at the impacts and the consequences that go beyond people not just having housing. One of the things that we know, for instance, is that homelessness amongst students in our community, we had numbers that are, say, like 3,000 students in R C S D were homeless at some point in the 2022, 23 schools. And that is more than 10% of the city's school district population. And if we think that housing is an issue and that our school systems are not adequately able to graduate students, part of it is because, and part of it is because students are homeless and don't have stability. Like, those are things that we have to decide as a community that we want to fix. That our children are important, that our community needs stabilization, they need educated residents in order to build thriving economies and places where we all want to live. And so I think that our work has to go beyond housing as just a single silent element to all the things that it enables to have safe, affordable housing for everyone. And so I would say that if there's an opportunity for a housing task force to go beyond what the definition of quality is, to look at what it means to have a fully functioning housing system in our community that affords housing at the right price points for everybody, and we can do some work on that, that I would be very appreciative of.
Thank you.
Councilmember. Thank you so much for all the work you do for our community. Our MAPP shows up on essentially every front you can think of. I really appreciate the work you all do. HAVP, we don't know if it's going to pass at the state level. We're still waiting to see. But have you seen examples of counties or cities creating a similar voucher program to meet the needs of their communities?
So I think that there, I don't have data with me. My understanding is that there are cities and communities that are able to do these voucher programs that are very tailored to their communities. I think that it is definitely an opportunity for us in this state to subsidize and provide more, because we have huge housing issues, right? We have to figure out some unique ways to deal with housing. And we know that subsidizing the cost of housing in a state where housing costs are so out of reach for a lot of people. We know how many people, like especially in this city, right? 70% of the people who live in Rochester are renters. And if rent is unaffordable, if a significant portion of people are paying more than 50% of their income in rent, then that's already got to be a struggle because how are they going to afford everything else in here? How are they going to afford, like, what don't they get to have? Food? Transportation?
Yes.
Healthcare, childcare, like what don't they get to have? Utilities? What don't they get to have if they have 50% of their income going toward rent? We have to be, we can solve this problem in our community, but we have to make some decisions about what's important.
I would agree with you. And I'll keep that in mind, especially as we are, as a city, putting our budget together, which we go on June. Budgets are statements of our priorities, and what we fund is what we value. I wondered about the data that you, from the Urban Institute. I would love to dig into that a little bit more, how they got those numbers.
We, in fact, that is something that we just got blocked off of that maybe the last couple days. I'm going to stick that in our notes and take that in our coffee for what? Because it was real data, and they had it for a bunch of other cities, but we were able to dig down and to get the Rochester number, so we can certainly share that.
Yes, one of the hindrances that we have is that we don't have the real-time data. How many units are available? How much is rent? How many people do we have that are looking for housing versus how much housing do we have? And it makes it urgent to legislate without the data. It's kind of like we're legislating blind. Would you agree that one step that we could take as a city is just to get the data?
Absolutely, absolutely. And it is imperative that we know what the current state is in order to start to make changes on what we want to do. Like, data is critically important. I totally agree with you. We started to, we've done some work, we've done some work with Enterprise Community Partner when we were looking at homelessness, and they came in and just started to do a lot of data analysis for us. So it's not, I think that it's hard to get if not impossible. But I think that we don't always have a priority of getting the data. And we know that it takes sometimes some funding, and it takes a little bit of, you know, some skill, maybe some technical skill.
There are some cities that have rental registry portals, you know, and like everything enforcement is, that was in the defense, but at least, you know, that there is an incapability and the expectation that that data is updated on a regular basis. And even some that keeps track of demographics, and you can actually see families move. So that, I agree with you.
Transparency data starts to make, it brings all those things to life, right? So once you have the data, then you can start to say, here's what's really going on. As long as you don't have the data, then people don't have to really say, they know what's going on.
That's been frustration, you know, as we've been having this conversation about identification for a decade. How long leaders could deny that it's happening?
If we don't have any data, then we can deny it.
That's right, that's right. Thank you so much, Rachel.
Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it. Have her here.
Next, we have Amy Dammel from the Manchester Grand's Past Resistance.
Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimonies about homelessness and housing solutions that actually work and some barriers. The housing solutions and services that I have seen that were effective are agile, patient, collaborative, and fully funded. So there's a lot of them, right, that have those qualities. One I want to call out is the Chronic Homes Work Group, which partners with the homelessness runs. It's a group that meets monthly, and they have two sessions. First session is very small, and we talk about people who are outside. And we have healthcare providers, outreach providers, and housing providers in the meeting. So people will say, hey, has anyone seen Becky? And, oh, I saw Becky last week. She was at the Sue Pigeon Live at Cameron Ministry. And we can help Becky better that way. This is something that's necessary because of encampment removals. We lose track of people all the time. And sweeps for encampment removals are one of the barriers preventing unhoused individuals from accessing stable housing. They dismantle a property, destroy or ruin it for future use, displace people. That displacement is so key because it prevents outreach and healthcare supports from finding people that aren't offering those supports. We know that housing programs that exist now take eight to 15 months to access, to get an apartment. Right, 15 months. So when the police come and say, hey, we did outreach first. We were there for 45 days telling people that we were going through an encampment removal. 45 days is not enough time. 45 days, these people going either to a shelter for one night and then being kicked to the curb the next day. Go to DHS, sign up. It's not that simple. It's very complicated to get and bring assistance from DHS. And this is someone usually who has PTSD from staying outside, as anyone would, and minimal, sometimes more severe issues. They may have substance use disorder, and they may be in a pre-contemplative stage of stopping chaotic use. So going to DHS and signing up is very, very difficult under these circumstances. Not everyone has mental illness, not everyone has substance use disorder, but a lot of people who are outside do. There's also families outside in cars, and they're real hard to find. They know that CPS will be involved if they're found, so they hide. And so it's very difficult to offer safety, support, warming supplies, food, and healthcare to these folks. Some cities have tried safe parking lots for families and individuals who park their cars there, and services can be brought to them. It's a really good idea. Some other barriers preventing unhoused individuals from accessing stable housing are lack of documentation. are lack of documentation or use of cleaning. Right now, the city, or sorry, the county offers a program once a month, on Tuesday at a certain time, I don't remember the time, nobody ever remembers the time. You can go and you can get an I D if you had one and it was lost, probably for this week. And if you, you can go and get I D on one day. The city could do something similar, offering an I D program. We need to do a local I D program, which could be really helpful for a lot of marginalized populations who have trouble getting state I D. That documentation is one thing that allows people to get an apartment with permanent supportive housing. Stigma, when a person is seen as having substance use disorder, all their other issues are ignored. I know of a chronic homeless woman who was not assessed at the hospital because she had substance use disorder. She had a mental illness, she needed to be assessed and treated for that mental illness, and she was not, she was sent away. She was not even given a pass. And this doesn't just happen when it does, this happens all the time. And another barrier is that there's not enough shelter beds, particularly low barrier of shelter beds, but really just in general. So the point in time count shows the dramatic increases overall homelessness, chronic homelessness, and unsheltered homelessness, and non-royal economy are down. And I'm going to read some data, stay with me. There were four hundred and thirty-nine homeless households without children in twenty twenty-three. Now it's six thirty-five a year later. That's households without children. Meanwhile, there's five hundred and seventy beds for adults without children. That leaves sixty-five adults without shelter beds. And these are under-recorded numbers, we know that they're very hard to find in the research. But sixty-five adults without shelter beds. There were three hundred and fifty-five homeless households with children in twenty twenty-three, up to four hundred and fifteen homeless households with children. There were three hundred and ten beds. That's a huge gap. Now, there was a new family shelter opened out through a street, but it only has an additional fifty beds, so there's forty-five families, forty-five families without shelter beds. The number of total homeless individuals counted in shelters around the streets was one thousand fifty-six in twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-three went up to one thousand three, it went up to one thousand fifty-six. Unsheltered is seventy-eight individuals, it went from forty-one to seventy-eight, and almost doubled in one year. And number ninety-five chronic homeless individuals in twenty twenty-three, that's up to one hundred and eighty-one chronic homeless individuals in twenty twenty-four. Even when there are enough beds, two other issues come up. People have D H S sanctions, so they're not allowed to access empty beds. I mean, if there's a bed in the community, they can't have it because of their sanction or their over-income. And there's internal barriers in all the shelters, such as rampant theft, noise, crowded conditions, lack of adult LGBTQ-specific shelters, lack of culturally competent shelters, underpaid shelter staff who compete to rent a home, with holding meals for tardiness, for example. So the shelters are difficult, this is the state. You asked, what would you recommend the city council prioritize in its budget to support unhoused residents? Investigate and fund overdose prevention centers. We know opioid addiction is huge. We know that, that overdose prevention centers mitigate risk of harm, just by the name of the bar. They mitigate risk of harm while people use substances, just like you get when you go to the bar. People would not be using elsewhere, leaving meals on the streets, being barred from shelters because of drug use, mialia, and being seen as nuisances and criminals to people with mental disorder. The sole reason we do not call substance use disorder a disability is because the disability system would be so overwhelmed by need if we did. That's a terrible reason to pretend this is not a disabling condition, and the policy they can promote better housing outcomes is O P Cs. Fund low-barrier shelters in the budget. Low barriers, low-barrier shelters are those that limit foreigners' entry, accept people with sanctions, and who are over-income, and dispense with barriers that limit people from being able to stay there, so perfumes, couples being allowed to stay together with pools or cons. They have features like safety bathrooms, where someone takes a cell phone feature with them to the bathroom, and if they don't call the front desk, after the feature goes off after four minutes, someone will go and check out whether they've used our can on that, and everybody can. That's a safety bathroom. It's a feature of low-barrier shelter, which just acknowledges reality. It says, this is what's happening, overdoses are happening, people are dying every day. I don't know if you guys have watched or your prime alerts, but they post overdoses every day, every day. And it's more than car accidents, it's more than murders. It's, it's an epidemic, and we need to deal with it, we care. Fund support service-only programs in recognition of many structural barriers that lack of supportive housing, supportive housing, and the fair market rent rate exists. And my final thing for the budget is fund universal basic income for all residents. And I, I was interested in the fact that people talk about increased wages, and all for that. People out of quarter talk about bringing in better jobs, definitely for that. But in the meantime, fund universal basic income for all residents. Wages have not kept pace with prevailing fair market rent costs, which have risen dramatically in recent years. In twenty twenty, seven years ago, the F M R for a one-bedroom was seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. In twenty twenty-five, the fair market rent for one bedroom is one thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars. That's an eighty-seven percent increase in rent in less than five years. Wages increased from twenty twenty, it was twelve fifty dollars, fifteen fifty. That's a twenty-four percent increase in wages, it's not two days. This is why people are hustlers. And universal basic income on how pay basic needs, like housing, just people come out. That's what it's for. We are, we are the people, after all, that, that, we are, we are the people that need it. Is, we are the people that need housing. What supports or alternatives do you believe should be in place before encampments are removed? They shouldn't be removed. They are ugly evidence that there is a housing and shelter shortage, and they remind us of the need to provide more housing and shelter in as many collaborative, creative ways as we can imagine, like socialized housing, like co-ops, all kinds of housing, like doubling people up if they want to be. Don't put people in single apartments, let them stay together and fund it. Instead of destroying the evidence of harm, turning a blind eye, encampments allow us to squarely get the issue of lack of comfortable and supportive housing. They also tell us where people are, so we can bring them services directly. Have appropriate policies and enforcement practices contribute to harm and further marginalization of our unhoused neighbors. We know that eviction by landlord or primary tenant is seen as housing homelessness, but there's other reasons too. Exits from hospitals, exits from foster care, exits from jail, and exits from substandard housing. Now, that's a city process that you can fix. Right now, when people are in substandard housing and they complain that the apartment is not available, the answer is, go be evicted, go be homeless, and then I'll help you get into a shelter, maybe for your family, except we don't have enough brand-new shelter beds. So good luck to you. There is no process for people who are in substandard housing to get out of that situation if I have some comment based on data housing. Each of these exits represents systems of care and support and public safety which do not provide care and public safety. The legal system barely protects residents, because we don't have a right to counsel yet. The market does not provide enough housing. Lack of housing homelessness are actually just leverage in our urban economy, they're purposeful. And bureaucratic processes that make this work are sanctions, over-income regulations, federal, state, and local requirements to access temporary assistance, denial rate in non-royal economy D H S for temporary assistance, which is incredibly high, and the criminalization of substance use disorder, it's abuse of government, does not withstand the crisis of the opioid epidemic. Finally, there's simply not enough government funds for shelters for adults and families, medical respite, housing, skilled nursing care beds, or mental health involved on disability and supportive housing. All of these could be funded. Thank you so much for your time.
Yes, we've been talking a lot about what cities do in the midst of these federal cuts and powerful executive orders. And a part of that, like we talked about in terms of legislation, we could have an enhanced sanctuary city policy that actually protects. So can you talk a little bit about the Supreme Court decision that will allow folks who are living homeless to be ticketed and maybe jailed? And what we can do as a city in the midst of those powerful policies?
The decision you're talking about is grant pass Oregon, we, Lori Johnson at all. And in that decision, the Supreme Court did say municipalities can criminalize homelessness, even when there are not enough shelter beds. It's a terrible decision, and my group formed in response to it. It became a resistance that we had to respond to. I think the city legislation that could help is legislation that says, not only are we not going to be criminalized, we're going to provide sanctuary status for people who are homeless, we're going to protect them from encampment sweeps or removals, as the city can sometimes call them. Or sometimes the city says, we all do sweeps, which, yes, you do. And most importantly, I think, we would add an enforcement mechanism. We wouldn't just say, this is something that you should do or ought to do. This is something that you will do, you will protect people who are homeless from criminalization or will lose your city job. That's what the legislation should stay. And I think it's something that the community wants, not just hustler people, but advocates for it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Martin? Yeah, after the mayor engaged in a sweep right on the holidays, the community was very united in advocating for our unhoused neighbors and ensuring that they are treated with dignity. Do you have any examples of cities that have passed similar legislation following the grant-pass decision where it provides sanctuary for people that are unhoused?
I know that many cities are working on legislation. You can go to a site online called Halden Up Handcuffs, and see draft legislation that a lot of cities in the United States are looking at and trying to break forward. And that's something that we're, we're interested to cross forward, for sure.
And last question, you mentioned funding support services.
Yeah, and I glossed it over, because I know I was talking long. But support services only are programs that don't necessarily have a housing component themselves. They rely on referrals for housing, for vouchers, permanent supportive housing vouchers, and placements for participants. Their focus on direct outreach, case management, H M I S data collection, that's management information systems, data collection, and person-centered services. They also have usually stipends for participants for things like rented application fees, furniture, storage fees for their things, so they don't lose them. Support services only recognize that it takes eight months to find an apartment in this market that will take permanent supportive housing voucher, a head voucher, that will pass inspection, that is suitable to the tenant. It just takes a long, long time. And so support services only programs, the one that the city funds now is Liberty, and I think they do a great job of connecting the folks and bringing them support. And you've also funded person-centered housing options. They have housing vouchers themselves, but they also do direct outreach, and they're pretty good at it. The other program that I think has worked very well is M C Collaborative Neighborhood and Bastards Program, which works with hustlers people themselves to help other hustlers people and pays them in cash. This is so important, it gets rid of a lot of barriers. It doesn't say, all right, we need your I D, we need your address, we need your phone number. Well, I don't have an address, and I don't have a phone, and I don't have an I D, so I can't have a job. It removes all those barriers, gives people something to do, and helps them help other people. Pure-led, pure-nominated, it's great. The other peer program is East House, from a program called Infinity Homes, which is pure-led housing for people in mental health sort of crisis. And they're allowed to stay there for thirty days. And it's been an alternative for a lot of folks around the street. You typically have to have a housing plan or some kind of access it, but it's all pure-led.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I have one's final question. I'd like to talk about the role of sanctions, and I know that this is a county issue. I recently, I know someone who was recently released from prison, who was in a halfway house, and it took him too long to find an apartment, and so they sanctioned him and kicked him out of the halfway house. How often do these happen?
Constantly. People get sanctioned for not finding an apartment fast enough every day. People get sanctioned for not bringing in enough landlord students. Now, that means you went, you filled out a rental application, and you're looking at an apartment. Sounds good, right? You're proving that someone's looking for housing, they're not sleeping in the shelter. The problem is, you need fifty dollars to apply for the, for the property, even just to look at it. The person probably has an eviction history in Lyon or prison in their background. They have a criminal legal history, and they aren't going to find an apartment that quickly, and they get sanctioned all the time.
Especially when it looks like we have only forty, extremely low housing options and seventy-seven very low housing options. What do you rather run to be, Councilwoman, do to put pressure on the county to change that system?
That's a good question. What is the city's, what is the city's leverage? I think maybe it comes down to working with R P D. If you want R P D to work, because the county works with R P D all the time to sweep encampments. So that's a city leverage. If the county wants R P D to help them do things, then they should stop sanctioning people and creating more housing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Help us win, executive director, Family Promise of Greater Rochester. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hello? Thank you so much for having me this evening. I'm Kim, I'm the executive director, Family Promise of Greater Rochester. I also sit on the board of City Youth Community Land Trust, and I've a member of the recently formed Housing Passion Collective. I'm going to talk about family homelessness to wrap us up tonight. And a lot of what the others have said has resonated, I'm a rock star on my R P type of page here. We start every gathering at Family Promise with reading our mission and vision, so we'll read that tonight. Family Promise of Greater Rochester, founded in two thousand and four, assists families that are stuck or experiencing homelessness to achieve sustainable independence by providing person-centered, holistic services in collaboration with the greater community. And our vision. Family Promise of Greater Rochester will achieve success when affordable, decent, affordable housing is seen as a human right, and every family has a place to call home. We support families through five core programs. Our prevention and diversion program, shelter, after parent stabilization, transitional housing, and the recently added housing navigation program. We believe housing is a human right. And the biggest barriers to housing outside of the intentional inequitable systems that are in place are the stagnation of wages, which has been referenced tonight, and a lack of supportive housing, which has definitely been, been talked about tonight. So moving on to family homelessness. One of the most concerning trends for the recent point in time nationally was that there was a forty percent increase in family homelessness. Nearly a hundred and fifty thousand children experienced homelessness on a single night in two thousand and twenty-four nationally, representing a thirty-three increase from two thousand and twenty-three. As Amy referenced, our local point in time shows something very similar, and I'm just going to focus on the number of unhoused households with children. As she stated, this went from a hundred and nine in two thousand and twenty-three to four hundred and twenty-one in two thousand and twenty-four. And this does not include households that are not defined households. But we define them as households that are unhoused. But we define them as households that are unhoused. And that, those are our families that are doubled up, tripled up, quadrupled up. And we hear about it every day. At Family Promise and our shelter program, we can't keep up with the number of requests that are coming in every day. And the requests are different than they used to be. I've been there for fifteen years, and I never thought that I would be sitting in front of you today talking about what I'm seeing every day. As reference, families are sleeping in cars. They don't want to be found in their cars because of threats of C V S. But almost every day, if not countless times a day, we get calls from families with children, families with children, sleeping in their cars. Most of the families that we walk alongside are employed. Last year, seventy percent of their were employed, seventy percent. They keep their cars because they need their cars to get to work. They lose their housing, they keep their cars, and they sleep in their cars. We've also had families calling us from sleeping in U-Hauls, from storage units, porches, abandoned homes. A few weeks ago, I asked mom, where did you stay last night with your babies? And she said, outside. Again, in fifteen years, I never thought I would be here tonight or experiencing the calls that we get on a daily basis from families sleeping outside in their cars in abandoned homes. It really shouldn't leave us, right? So it was referenced that households are paying fifty percent of their income on rent. What we see with our families is, yes, the same, fifty to ninety percent of income is spent on rent. We also have a progression diversion program, which also indicates the need in our community. We offer funding to help with rental rehers and funding to help with security deposits. So that's to prevent eviction, so families don't fall into homelessness, or security deposits for families who have lost housing. And it's diversion funding, so we give it to families that are double-dubbed before they enter the shelter system. That money is restricted forever, essentially. We open the portal for requests for the first three days of every month, and we get about three hundred to four hundred requests over those three days. Last August, we received eight hundred requests over three days. So that shows you the magnitude of need for rental rehers. Families are struggling in this community. We all know it. It's getting worse. For families with vulnerabilities or little safety net, even a seemingly minor event can trigger the loss of a senior home. But there are solutions. And at the Register Housing, the Housing Action Collective, we do talk about solutions because we think there is a way out of this. And as an organization, Family Promise has decided to envision a community where every family has a home and a chance to build a better future. In 2021, we were given the opportunity to purchase our building in Eastwood Neighborhood. We jumped on that opportunity because of the four apartments on the seventh floor, which we quickly turned into transitional housing. So now we have four families in those units. They pay below market rent. So one bedroom is five fifty, a two-bedroom is six fifty, and a three-bedroom is seven fifty. Forty percent of the rent they pay goes into a restricted Astro account, and they get that back when they leave us a tenant after two years. During those two years, they work on stability, whether that's getting on subsidized housing list to get into more sustainable housing when they leave the transitional housing program, or homeownership. Out of the two families right now, we have one working on homeownership, and we have another one that's in that habitat today. So, and we say no. And it can be done. Last year, we entered a burger shift with City Roots Community Land Trust. They transitioned two of their properties to us. We are currently renovating them, so the four apartments will grow to eleven. Four apartments for families. All under the same premise of reduced rate and ask forty percent escrow. We're a small grassroots organization. We have five full-time staff and two part-time staff. If we can do it, other people, other organizations can do it. And I think the city needs to get how this kind of grassroots work. So how do we scale this up? So for us, City Roots was a godsend, right? And that land is professionally affordable because it's going to be captured in trust. So we need to see other ways of doing this across other organizations. A few other notes I have here. I encourage you to talk to Patrick Hannah from the Housing Action Collective. He has done some incredible work on the cost of homelessness in our county. We can't afford not to do something. When you see his data, it gets staggering. We talked about data and the lack of data. That group is doing some really great work in terms of getting statistics. Dr. Janelle Boukwa-Banma. I know you were at one of our meetings. She's done some incredible work pulling together spreadsheets and data. So I encourage you to reach out to them for that. So you know we have the solutions. We must have the collective will to get these solutions addressed. So I'm sitting back there, and I'm thinking of, you ask me everybody, what other city has done this? What's the template for this? Wouldn't it be amazing if in other city council meetings across the nation, Rochester was referenced? Like, wouldn't that be amazing? So that we were the city that has the tenant's right to counsel? That we were the city with universal basic income? That we're the city with the shelter allowance, so the shelter allowance is what we're asking for? That we have global barrier shelters? And that we have accessible, equitable housing for all? Wouldn't that be incredible? Andy Carey says this all the time in our Housing Action Collective. He thinks like, let's be that city. Let's dream it, let's be it. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I just got to get cleaned up.
Everything.
So thankful for your testimony and for all of the solutions that you provided and the example because you're doing it. So it must be possible. I personally would love to follow up with you a little more about your model and how you're doing what you're doing and how you're subsidizing it and learn how we can scale it up.
Scale it up. Did you hear that?
Yes, yes. That's true.
Ms. Oliver Smith had to step away at eight o'clock. Need a show back. I really, really love the vision you paint of what's possible. I think within the legislative body, you tend to want to do what's already been done because it's safe and it's gone through all the scrutiny that's already happened. But a lot of the time, especially in this climate, we will have to be the first. So I'm really excited that you're painting that vision. And you are doing a lot of things that are not usual, I would say, right? So you already have experience doing that. Can you tell me about the impact on homelessness on children? I think that's a big issue that's happening, and I don't think we talk about it enough, right? When we talk about people who are unhoused, we don't humanize them, right?
Yes, right.
And these are our families, these are our neighbors. So I want to understand more about the overall attack we're seeing, where are you?
Yeah, I think, you know, on a human level, I always tell the household, like, the custodian of the parent, like, they're going to, they're going to look at you. You know, so it's really about how the adult is doing, is how the kid is going to do. But when an adult is in crisis, the child is also in crisis. So how is the child impacted in every way, right? We see a lot of kids that aren't going to school because they're moving around, or they're sleeping in their car, like hardly getting to school, and what kid wants to go to school and sleeping in their car? So I think education is a huge one, a huge impact on a child that's unhoused. Healthcare, any social determinant of health. When you don't have housing, that's going to be impacted. And just shame. So, you know, just some of the emotions that come with being unhoused as a child. I think shame, embarrassment, not wanting to see your parents go through this, worry, fear. You know, talk about like increase in cortisol and brain development, and that's all stuff that's happening at a very young age that sometimes can be irreversible. So I think just that intergenerational trauma goes just passed on and on.
And you've been doing this for quite a while, and so many people have solutions that make sense, that are well thought out, that are evidence-based. And I do think homelessness is a policy choice. Can you talk about, like, why is it? Why is there a lack of urgency around holistically, meaningfully resolving this issue? That's a huge crisis in our community.
I do because it serves, does empower, often. You know, if you look at Matt, he does his work. And he makes a pretty good case that helping people in poverty benefits a lot of people in power that have more wealth. So I think a lot of it is intentional because we do have the solutions. We do, we do have the answers. If we really wanted to solve homelessness, we could do it. There's enough money, there's enough experience, there's enough effort in this community and others, I think we could do it if we really wanted to. So I wonder if it's because we want poverty to be there, it serves a real purpose. But I do think we need to be creative, right? Like you said, we kind of follow the same rulebook. And at Family Promise, we've just kind of had to work outside of the rulebook. We're not a DSSA or a shelter, so we don't rely on that funding. Thank goodness not. But we've just always had to kind of color outside the lines, so to speak. And it's worked for us, and we've grown, so it can be done. And we're part of a national organization. There are two hundred Family Promise affiliates across the nation, and they're all doing the same work, and they're all being very successful doing it. So I think it's a template for a lot of other organizations.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you so much for having me.
We will now hear from members of the community. We are giving two minutes to hear your testimony. And we will begin with Marquesha O. Jackson. Oscar Brerodur. Bob Witzel. Mickey DePerna. Mickey is followed by Vanceman.
Hi, guys. I'm also a member of Rochester's past resistance. And what I was hoping to talk to you guys about today is the accessibility to current shelters that we have. Just a couple of weeks ago, there was a blind woman who turned away from one of the shelters because they couldn't meet her needs. And they just turned her away. They offered to try and find a care for her. One of our members from Rochester's past resistance ended up helping her. Another woman in a wheelchair does not have legs. I found sitting down in the cold, nineteen degrees outside. I called the ambulance. And the only reason I was able to get her to go into the ambulance and trust me was because I met with her multiple times before. That's something that a lot of people don't seem to understand about our Rochester unhoused is that you can't just walk up to them and have them immediately trust you. These people are traumatized, but sleeping outside. The hospital then released this woman. I saw her just the other day. It's the hospital's responsibility to release people to a proper level of care. And releasing a woman in a wheelchair to the streets is not a proper level of care. There are no LGBTQ friendly shelters, even the ones that say they are or not, because there's people there that are not LGBTQ friendly, whether they're residents or staff. We talked earlier in another forum, a lot about what culturally competent means and who are actually doing those trainings. The shelters are not trained. And in fact, many of our shelters are explicitly anti-LGBTQ because they're religious organizations. One other thing I want to talk about is how encampments are harm reduction, and we save people's lives. A couple of years ago, a student's encampment swept. And that led, directly led, to the death of a community member. Because when there's encampments and people have substance use disorder, people can then watch out for each other, look out for each other, use with each other, not use alone. And administer marksmanship when it's not necessary. When you take down these encampments, it kills people. Whether it's because there's a substance use problem or it's because now they don't have any shelter or anything, one way or another, it kills people. And I just really want people to understand that the current shelters that we have are not meeting the standard of care that they should be doing. And the city needs to do something about it. Thank you.
Ms. Smith is followed by Lorraine Park.
Good evening again. I'm going to be short and sweet. I'm going to take one minute, about two minutes. So earlier, I talked about specifically recovery housing. What I want to talk about in this minute and some seconds is housing on a continual. When we talk about housing on a continual, we're talking about having adequate facilities to meet the needs of those particular people, right? We're not talking about people that are in a shelter being mixed in with someone who's dealing with some chronic housing challenges. That's a different mindset. That's a different person who needs more attention and care than someone dealing with transitional housing. And as the folks that spoke before me have said already that we have plenty resources. Yes, we need more money, but we need a better coordination of care when we talk about housing on a continual. And we need to be looking at communities that have invested in grassroots organizations to be able to do the work that they do better. Not do a good job, do a better job. And that takes money. And so one of the things I want to invite us to look out for is a research project that we are involved right now with, with the University of Rochester in talking about housing. This is a five-year project. We're in year two. We'll actually be recognizing two years of that project on July twenty-eighth of 2025. And I'm hoping we'll be able to do it within the community and not if you are in the city. The thing that we're focusing on is looking at housing on a continual and looking at adequate care, adequate support and assistance. And oh, by the way, the business community and the faith community need to be challenged. The faith community needs to be saying, we need to be saying to the faith community, hey, where are you at? Where are you at? Where's your contribution? These are God's people, right? It's not just the people that come in your flock every Sunday and drive in and drive out. And the business community, oh, you want us to come get them out of your doorway? Where are you at? Where's your investment? Thank you.
Lorraine Park. Marcus C. Williams. Lilly Suda. Lilly is followed by Henry Linsky.
Hello, closing members. I'm a born and raised Rochesterian. I love it here and I want to stay. But our housing system is broken, and it's making it harder and harder for me, my friends, my neighbors to stay in the community we have built. I've never dreamed of a large house with a light and a fence. I'd be more than happy with a small yard, fashionable garden, a little free library, and free to paint on walls any color. When my goal of having my own home gets farther and farther away, as I watch the homes in my neighborhood get bought up by private equity firms making full cash offers just to be very little or very easy to reach. I see the homes in the nineteen fort where I grew up sold for twice and not three times the price they sold. price they sold for just a decade ago. Yet I am one of the lucky ones. I made a living wage and I live in the former home safe apartment. But what about the thousands of other renters representing two-thirds of Rochester residents whose rents rise far faster than their wages ever will? Why are market rated apartments being built while residents are being priced out of tolls in so-called affordable residential apartments? Many of us in this room today are only a few paychecks on a family oriented save home elements away from the eviction our broke owes you. The rate of homelessness in the county increased 31% last year. The rates of uncharted and chronic homelessness almost doubled last year. So why are we encouraged to take a budgeting class just so we're told to cut back on just small toys we even afford, like grabbing a coffee at a cafe once in a while? We have a system that describes morality to homelessness. Rather than recognizing rents are skyrocketing while wages stagnate, individuals are being blamed for facing eviction and becoming unhoused. It is a system that encourages so many of our unhoused neighbors through DHS sanctions through the county. It is a system that continues to fail to recognize attention as disease rather than a crime. The answer to a housing crisis is not waiting for the market to adjust or classes on personal budgeting. It is taking action now. Stop all the empty space. They uncover the equity from our housing market. Pass a living wage for all Rochester workers tied across the living grid. Create an overdose convention center in Rochester. This has tremendous support in the community forums on whole period settlement funding. Change to a housing first model. We need compassion, we need understanding, we need long-term solutions. Thank you.
Henry Linsky is followed by Jonathan Zabar.
My name is Jonathan Linsky. I'm the policy and advocacy coordinator of Pre-Pet Rochester. Today, I wanted to quickly go through some of the reforms we've been pushing for to be included in the SAP. Obviously, the SAP is not necessarily the topic of this discussion, but I want to have some policy solutions. One, higher density is good for mobility, wheelchair accessibility, viability, and public transportation use. Strong cities are built on dense neighborhood level of amenities and dense urban floor. The draft plan provides a strong, provides a positive upsony, changes along certain transit corridors, but the new board would encourage maximal use of these areas through, by providing, those areas by providing for residents' neighborhood needs. Basically, instead of thinking of upsony along a particular bus line, let's think about upsony along a particular transit stop, so that folks who are using transit can walk through amenities they need, instead of being forced to live along a busy corridor through the bus. Second of all, our city should allow for ADUs and duplexes throughout the city. I currently live in a duplex on South Moon Avenue, which zones a single-family residential area. My house was built before the zoning code, which is why it exists, and it would not be allowed to be constructed today as it stands. Allowing for gentle densities such as duplexes and ADUs allows, or helps to increase the number of housing options in our communities, and we should allow them to develop. Three, we should remove parking minimums citywide. Rochester has already eliminated parking minimums from downtown, but we can and should go much further. Parking minimums help to limit residents' development and drive up the cost of housing. Forty-six North American cities have eliminated parking mandates altogether, including Buffalo and Kansas City. A recent study has shown that within four years of eliminating parking minimums, Buffalo built 1,000 new homes that otherwise wouldn't have existed. Parking is still being constructed, but not at exorbitant rates. And four, we should place a moratorium on new gas stations, drivers, and parlages. These types of businesses place priority on vehicle drivers passing through our neighborhoods, and the frequent in-and-out traffic increases danger for pedestrians and cyclists. Minimizing the number of these businesses will also help support the city's carbon production goals by reducing the consumption of gasoline and wasted idling cars and drivers. These properties also yield far lower tax revenue to cities compared to traditional dwellings. Thank you.
Dr. Lisa Barr is followed by Ian Incon.
Before I get going, let me give you some photos I took of the property in question that I think would be a really good facility that, you know, maybe the city could get their county to work on, help people with housing here. My name, if you could, okay, well, my name is Lisa Barr. I've lived here about six years. I love it. Rochester is in the site of developers because we are climate-wise and have a desirable location. I hope to see Monroe County resources go to help people in need, the new and old residents of our community. To that end, I'd like you to consider asking the law department to explore eminent domain constructive nuisance regarding 911, Brooks Avenue. It's the former troubled Holiday Inn Airport was converted to a deluxe Ramada Plaza Airport franchise in 2017, went downhill rapidly since 2019. It's for sale now by Christian and Wakefield Pyramid Brokerage Company. Note the unstacked security bars on page three, I'll get to that later. The benefit for Rochester requiring this for construction jobs and trainings, we could set up something like what Baltimore has. After it's converted for people without housing who don't fit the criteria, well, they could be off by themselves due to the long and separated areas of this huge complex for families. The kids could use a pool, learn to swim, get certified for lifeguard jobs there. NIMBY, I think, but not in my backyard, objections would be nil. It's bounded by I-390 across from Frederick Jefferson Airport, and a big ditch behind it, natural gas, fuel, a lot of people on the other side. Yet it's within walking distance from Thursday Avenue, businesses like The Dollar Store, People's Choice, a post office, a lawn rent. Maybe get Monroe County to do a dedicated hourly mini-bus service to help people get where they need to go, to get back on their feet. The site gets nearly full day sun, so maybe a nice hilly grant for solar panels on top and nearby businesses across Brooks Avenue, Brooks Avenue could maybe help offset the cost of social workers, since Monroe County doesn't seem to value that over a giraffe. But this site fits constructive nuisance in eminent domain because Monroe County sheriffs are already involved. I saw at least one big illiterate raid at one place earlier this year. Every Friday, I drive by it. I go to a grocery store and fill my SUV and take it to a food pantry. And I stopped because I saw these things going by, and I didn't see anything about it, no coverage in the news. I thought that maybe it was a raid by ICE, I don't know. I didn't bother asking the sheriff because I work on the raid study commission. The study group, we were trying to do a survey in the Monroe County jail, and we refined the survey, and every time, sheriff asked her to postpone it. So we never got the opinions of people impacted by justice in Monroe County to be part of that study. I don't know what we can do with the county to maybe help to get this thing going, but I would hate to see this just go into development.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Eric Coates. Is followed by Ryan Akkowal.
Hello again, and thank you again for being here to listen to the community and help itself out. I had a couple of items I wanted to bring up about the housing issues in Rochester, but many people before me have already covered them pretty thoroughly. And I heard one note from Roxanne about the face, the increased income, or minimum income in local area. And that hit a note with me because it's been an issue I've always thought to be very important within the community of across the people of the United States. So it would be an incredible opportunity for us to try to instantiate a liberal minimum wage here in Rochester. And I know from seeing it in my friends' family and loved ones, how making a better income greatly impacts their life and their ability to afford housing. My friend, who previously could barely afford to afford splitting an apartment with a roommate, luckily ended up landing a job where they made over $20 an hour, and they were suddenly able to finally afford a place of their own for the first time in their life. And that greatly improved their life. Also, my partner, who had struggled to be able to afford their apartment and had cut back on a lot of their other important parts of their life, they recently gained a job making just over $20 an hour, and they can now afford their apartment, but still just barely. Like, $20 is really just starting to reach the bare minimum of what people need to survive, and we don't even have that right now. I really think having something like, as much as maybe $30, would put people at a rate where they can actually live. And then it's really not until you get to, like, people making or earning as much as $40 an hour where people start to thrive. So we are not even close to either of those numbers, and I think that would be amazing if we could work towards that. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca is followed by Ryan Akkowal.
Thanks so much for giving us the opportunity to be as community members. I am speaking as a renter in the East District and also a member of Rochester chapter for the Democratic Socialists of America. So everyone knows we're experiencing housing raises both here in Rochester and nationwide. Personally, I've put off the Jacob Coleman order year after year after year. Even though I'm privileged and receive a great education and have a well-paying job, I still can't save enough money to compete with the cash offers and the private equity firms buying up property. But, I mean, as so many people before me said, it's so much worse for people who aren't in my position, people who are unemployed or unreemployed, people with unaddressed substance use issues, and particularly for the over 1,000 unhoused individuals in our city as of 2024. We need both short-term and long-term solutions for these people who capitalism has failed the most, and to recognize that capitalism is the problem. We need strong policies that curb and direct fight against the capitalist class that directly sort of, or that direct resources to city residents and non-suburban investors. A housing task force that can tackle this broad issue by addressing several city-wide needs is much needed at this time. These needs have been talked about before by other people, ending campus heat, removing hostile architecture in public spaces, but also expanding low income in public housing and expanding housing first programs and other important policies. So, yeah. Right now, we know Rochester falls short, and this is an urgent need, and I hope, honestly, our city and our county will actively address it as such. So thank you so much for giving us the time.
Thank you. Rebecca is followed by Angela.
Good evening. Thank you all for hosting this hearing. And thank you to the three of you for being consistent champions on housing, through going through the tragedy of Good Cause 1.0, the victory of Good Cause 2.0. But really, in my view, that is not the end of the struggle, it's really the beginning. We should be making, instituting policies where we can measure that homelessness is going down every year in a substantial way, that we can measure progress in a substantial way if we take this seriously and we can get to housing as a human right. I just wanted to speak briefly on some really specific reforms, which I think the city council can implement or be a large part of. I want to uplift some people already said, Aqua speaking about right stabilization, and Alinka who spoke beautifully about the right to council, which we, right to council, I think is very winnable. We already, by some legal services, I think that we have covered 80 to 90% of the evictions already, so it wouldn't be a very hard step to get there. I think it's not a crazy pie in this garden, I think we can do it in Rochester. But I also want to speak about a few other things. So one is clean hands legislation. What do I mean by that? I mean recommendation number five of the Housing Quality Task Force under the Code Enforcement. This is already in the task force recommendations, but for some reason, since this would have such a huge impact, it's never been implemented. This legislation says if a landlord has health and safety violations, these are rented parent violations, the landlord cannot collect rent. Our Corporation Council, Patrick Beat, said the city can do this. This was his response to some of our previous proposals. This is an actionable proposal that could reduce 30 to 40% of evictions. Last time we looked at this, of the evictions was serious health safety violations, it was at that percentage. This would prevent people from even, from even collecting rent when they have these serious conditions. This is already embedded by the Corporation Council, recommended by Patrick Beat. Other specific things is to end the privatization of public housing to the Rochester Housing Authority. I know some pieces of legislation, but housing should already come through city council, but this is, the wait lists are already closed, this is actually affordable housing, and people can't get into it. Instead of expanding, finding ways to expand, the Rochester Housing Authority is privatizing public housing, getting rid of it through the RAP program, Rentless Isis Demotration Program, in Section 32. This is something we can do, it's actionable, end that process, end the privatization of public housing. I hear everybody talking a lot about supply, and of course, that's important, and as somebody mentioned, we need to regulate short-term rentals. We have a model policy in New York State, that's New York City. Everybody's going to need to increase supply. Yes, that is going to cost a lot of money, but guess how much it would cost to bring all these units back on the market for long-term housing? Zero. Passing regulation for this would immediately free up all of these out-of-town investors that are just coming in for short-term rentals. That's denying long-term rental housing, and it's denying long-term homelessness. So these people are flooding in and taking over our community. And the last one, and the last one I just want to say is, we need to work together to reinvent the city's affordable housing policy. The city contributes a lot of money to this, and they put out RFPs, but we need to prioritize the public money we're already giving to social housing. Housing that is controlled by the residents and is affordable to people of all incomes, no income, low income, all of it. The city already has a huge pot of money that it gives out to developers, which is often on affordable housing, often huge subsidies given to market rate housing. We can, we can change that. We can prioritize our public funds that already exist. Of course, we've got to find ways to expand it, but what already exists, but prioritizing social housing, that's going to get people off the streets, that's going to be long-term, and it's going to be controlled by the residents. So these are some really actionable things. I think we can work together, we can prioritize, but I think these are actionable that are not high in the sky, and we need to raise so much more for who could move the needle on some of these things.
Thank you. Angela is followed by Angela Smith.
Okay, just one moment, Ms. Angel, but have a seat. Brian, clean hands, recommendation number five. So is it, is clean hands an actual piece of legislation, or is it a narrative fight?
So, so yes, it's a piece of legislation. Basically, what recommendation number five is, it's already come out of the task force that is draft legislation on rented parent violations modeled after the Social Safety Act, which is where when there's health and safety violations, the county, if they're paying the rent through social services, they automatically withhold the rent. So, and there's some other laws too. So model that to these laws that already exist to say, if you have these violations, these rented parent violations, then the rent is no longer legally over. And that's going to incentivize landlords to fix it up or sell it to somebody who will, because no landlord is going to rent down properties if they can't collect rent, right? And this legalizes an important form of rent strike with major protections when the landlords are beating down our communities, and they're clawing the horns, and they're privatizing. So I think this is actionable, and it's already come out of the recommendation, it's already embedded by Corporation Council, we know it, we want to propose the legislation. If y'all, it's not legal, we can't do this, we can't do that. There's a lot of... There are ones not legal. We can't do this. We can't, you know, there's, there's a lot of, you know, wriggle rule. But I think this is actionable and we just say, we just want to implement what's already been recommended by the mayor's flagship task force, which I just got a letter in the mail about his reelection. And he said, I'll break this task force here. Well, this is one recommendation that would do a huge, huge, when we do a huge thing. So I don't want to give lip service houses. I would actually change the balance power by passing these actual significant reforms.
Thank you.
My name is Daniel Martin. I've been listening to things in my time. I've been homeless before. I had been heavily affected. I had got no justice. And when I called the police to unlock the event, lock on record, the police said, we can't do nothing about it, which is a violation because they're illegal staying. Second of all, we need to hold the people calm when we come, including the landlords. They don't want to fix their places. How I see it is if they don't want to see a vault, they should be rentless first. Second of all, if they're violation of the Code of Health Life, they should be fined. And the police need to start being put on the spot too because they do not violate the law. They do not gross off. They are red people. I can't go down my street at two o'clock in the morning without being wrested by a cop. And that's a problem too. And even in housing, when they take places from the homeless, such as the under, the underworn tunnels that were overruled, they take them from them, they're pushed out on the street to endanger us. They're doing this unlawful, basically seizing our property, damaging our property, stealing our property. But they don't count. But yet we just don't get, we'll be in jail. It's time for the state county legislature and the county monster to give them a program and start helping the people. And make affordable housing. They can't find these people, all these landlords making unreaful prices for their places to have and endangering people's lives because like me, they're not allowed ever. I can be in a game that way because I'm a former drug addict. But because of disability, people misunderstanding, okay? I can buy the loud app. Here, we don't even have to go to the federal cell phone. Because the police won't do their job. Because of, we don't have no obligation served for that. So, so in front of the public, it's like the person who's about to spill me. In front of the police, they don't care about that. There's some wrong with this picture. It's time for people to start being held responsible, starting with the county roster.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott Evans. Well, you know.
Just like that young, this young gentleman said, he's right. There's a lot of issue for Rochester and the people in it and the corruption that's in it as well, you know? This housing market was caused by councilmen and leaders with equity, taxes, you know?
So we should, you're talking to the next people at home.
Okay, yeah. It's all started here. So while landlords' properties were falling apart, I've been here to repeatedly prepare requests and requests. And after the fine justice, I discovered a disturbing network of corruption involving city officials, nonprofit organizations, landlords who misappropriate federal funds intended for affordable housing. The pattern of corruption and neglect extends to our elected officials who portray themselves as the men and women of the people who allow corporations to thrive at the expense of regular residents. Their actions include supporting inflated property values and tax breaks for big businesses that hurt middle-class minority families for the most. Their tangent, they work in tandem with corporate interests, pushing policies that benefit them while leaving others to suffer. This, in the East District, where these players hold power, the housing markets have been rigged. Nonprofits often link to city officials that exploit affordable housing funds to buy homes that should have gone to struggling homes, struggling families from 2021 to 2024. Over the last few years, they've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in way for appraisals and foreclosure from, foreclosure taxing homes that they've implicated. This corporation has gone on long enough. In 2022 till 2024, the Beechwood District had had a historic inflated property value, nor take out equity. They would own, they would, they would give homes to nonprofit organizations that were worth 4K, forty thousand, where there were affordable housing. And with the, with the work of their colleagues and personal nonprofit organizations, they were able to inflate those appraisals with the banking systems. Through that, they, through that, they were able to acquire a thousand or hundreds of homes in one day. And as that, as the crisis came, as price, as the crisis got bigger, they used those homes that they acquired from nonprofits to help these people get into these non- affordable homes. They used them as an Airbnb employee, as a monopoly scheme. So each room now, I can, I can use one bedroom, I'm thirty and a half. I can use a migrant here. I get eight hundred dollars from the government for living in this room, the same room, in the same goddamn room, I'll spend another eight hundred dollars. Sixteen hundred dollars when one person is sleeping in one room. So when you think, this is why, this is why the housing market went up so far. Why did it go back? Why did it level down? It was the equity they used. So now that, that you're giving these nonprofits, these homes for little to nothing, these nonprofits use this forty thousand dollar affordable housing that would naturally go to someone who had twenty dollars. That was their national median income, right? That would have been enough for them to afford that house and live there with their family. But you gave it to them, the wrong people. When the wrong person uses the right means, the right means work in the wrong way. And that's what's happened to these people and they have suffered the life. And now we're like, what should we do? What should we do? There's hundreds of nonprofits that are nothing but real estate companies that are just holding properties. They're only, they're just renting them off to people. They, they, they go back and forth. Those tax needs you had, those four quarters taxes, hundreds of thousands of loans that they're taking from people. I've watched even, if they took from black, uh, uh, black seniors, eighty-three years old. James WYNS, this man was, they're loose and took it for a house that was worth a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And they took it for forty, forty thousand, his landlord, his five judges. And he had lost against the city and had a battle in the mayor. But you guys were doing illegal foreclosures on these people, illegal foreclosures and, and, and unattached things. And you were, you were running through. And so now these people have this deed. What they do is use his name or use the deed and just take equity out of it. And so I'm like, more homes and buy more homes. You've lost it, okay? There's, and this is the beginning. It's wrapped up, you know? But I'm just saying, we can't play ignorant no more, you know? Because I am terrified. And more about, as James Baldwin said, I would be ready to reiterate, I am terrified of the more aptitude, the depth of heart of my councilmen and elected official. They've deluded themselves so long that they, they, they truly do not believe in the human. I base this upon what they do and not what they say. So in other ways, in, in, in another sense, they're morally, they're moral monsters, you know? And that's where it is. You have to have.
Thank you for your honesty.
And it's not, people are not going to vote for people like this anymore. We know the game is over. I've told enough people and they know. So if you think you're going to run this, this circle again, this, this evidence and all this playing games with us, cat dancing, uh, you know what I'm saying, kind of look good, don't pull yourselves in good deeds because this is going to stop.
Thank you.
It's going to stop.
Is there anyone else desire to speak? All right. So thank you for your comments. Seeing no additional speakers, this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.